I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
James Meyer.
Aziz Essam.
Norm Drummond.
Tara Franco.
And Mary, our other member, will be joining us a little bit late. But can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Folks, if, Brian, can you do me a favor? Can you move that easel over? Because, yeah, tuck it to the side. When you're ready to use it, you can.
All right, good.
Thank you. I know, I know this, you know, you want to watch the entertainment, right? All right, so, good evening, everyone. Our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, July 25th, and Tuesday, August 22nd. We do have one set of minutes to approve from May 23rd. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes with the suggested amendments?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's, those are good. So our, just to explain how our meeting works, that we do have three public hearings on this evening. These are applications that the board has already had an opportunity to review. So now we're asking and inviting the neighbors in and asking for your comments and any observations or anything about the property you might want to inform us about. Only these three applications will we be taking public comment on this evening. After the public comments, after the public hearings are over, then we do have additional applications, many of which we haven't seen or haven't had an app, a chance to talk with the applicant. So it'll be our first chance to do that this evening. So with that being said, we're going to go right into business. Public hearing, item number one, Appeal 3804 DePaulo. Stephen DePaulo is requesting an 80-foot front line variance for a proposed 7,200-square-foot building at 237 Route 216, Stormville pursuant to Section 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Second?
Yes.
On favor? Aye. Okay, so Tara's going to recuse herself, so it's up to the three of us right now, okay? All right, and Brian, just for your information, you have three members here, so you do have a quorum. Mary will be joining us as soon as she can get here, okay? Okay, so, this is an application that came before us a number of months ago. There is, right now, a single-family house on this property. The applicant is requesting to be able to tear down that house and to replace it with a garage, for lack of a better word, a large building, 7,200-square-foot building, in which you're going to be storing cars. That will, my understanding, have an attendant that will be parking the cars, storing the cars in there, and will be there. There will be an office on site? Okay, because I understood there was misinformation at the planning board. We'll address that in a second. But the issue is that that existing house that's there right now is awfully close to the road. Yes, it is pre-existing condition, but because of their significant wetlands on this property, and you guys did go to New York State DEC to request the ability to encroach on the buffer, I understood you were not successful with that request, so your ability to place a building on this site is pretty limited. And so that being said, that's why you're here before us, looking for the variance for this front line. Anything else you want to add? Take it from here.
That's it in a nutshell. The applicant would like to obviously construct a 7,200-square-foot storage facility for their higher-end cars. That is, that, that's the type of business that he has. He has one that exists right now down below. This is the type of facility where people drop off their cars that's stored in this heated, cooled, conditioned area. There will be no vehicle maintenance, no vehicle washing on-site. It's type of operation where somebody will drive to the site, they would pick up their car, and they would drive their car back into the storage facility until such time that they would come back to retrieve the car. Hours of operation, pretty much nine through five during Monday through Friday. On the weekends, it's appointment only, so it's a call service. So if, if somebody plans to be taking their car that weekend, they call ahead and there will be somebody there to take care of the car. There will be an office inside the building. There was some misinformation at the last planning board meeting, that's my fault, but there will be an office there for scheduling purposes. There will be an employee there on-site.
But one employee, right? So in terms of the employee, the employee will have probably likely one car in the parking lot?
Correct.
And you do not expect cars regularly to be parked outside?
Absolutely not.
Right, okay.
We're going to keep the existing garage that exists right now. There will be some, the paved area on the side of the garage closest toward the existing residential building. There could be some trailer storage there, which currently exists today. And what we tried to do in our latest iteration here that we're presenting tonight is, when we were in front of the planning board, obviously, this is a bigger building, it's located near the state corridor. Right now, the existing house is, let's say, 14 feet off the front line. This building would be 20 feet off the line. And the way we had the configuration at the planning board meeting, they asked us to flip the building. We had a jog in the back of the building, so what we did is, in order to kind of break up the line of sight along 216, is we flipped the building and put a gable on, on the front of it, to try to break it up and give it a little bit of depth.
Right.
It'll be a steel building, it'll be, it'll be clad with vinyl board and batten. There'll be some cul-de-sac stone along the bottom. There'll be a seamless roof, metal roof on top. We're showing windows and some dormers on the side. There will be a big overhead garage door that'll be located adjacent to the existing garage to allow cars to access in and out.
Off the side.
Correct. And what we tried to do is, I don't know if you can see it from here, but in the packets that I gave you, the intent is to obviously screen this as much as possible. We want to try to leave as much existing vegetation that's there along the corridor right now. There is a series of pine trees along the garage entrance, and there are some trees associated with the existing house that's there. We're going to try to keep those as best we can. And then, on the other side of, of where is, where the existing house is now, add a series of staggered pine trees, some deciduous trees, and also along the adjoining property, if you're looking north, we show some screening. There are, there is a small section between the existing garage and Brady's. We propose some small landscaping up front, again, just to try to break it up and provide as much visual, visual screening as possible. Again, we've been to the DEC, we asked permission to try to encroach into the 100-foot setback associated with the wetland on-site. They gave us a hard stiff arm and said, "No, please stay out of our buffer."
But the garage, the existing garage is already in that buffer?
First portion of that existing garage is in the buffer now.
Right, that's true, a portion of it, okay.
Right. Other than that, I'm trying to figure.
Right, it is important to note that Brady's power equipment is next door, okay? So from a commercial use, from a business sense, this is kind of like the transitional property. So Brady's is a very, very active business. Regularly, people are coming in there with trailers, with all sorts of equipment. You're not talking about trailers, you're not talking about that sort of equipment or that sort of use, you know, high-traffic use here.
Correct. And this is, this is a business that's obviously, it's, the applicant feels that it's going to be coming to this area relatively soon as far as high-end car storage. He has one right now. This is not the type of thing that's going to be 100% occupancy within, you know, two or three years. It's going to slowly build up, but he has full confidence that this will evolve into something similar to what he has down below.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm trying to, trying to think of some other points.
All right, not, not to be pessimist, but what happens if the business fails? And we are left with a 7,200-square-foot building? What happens?
I'll use it for some storage.
Oh.
You got that much stuff, huh?
All right, we, it was explained to us that, yes, you are going to be parking some of your own cars in there. Okay, all right. Because, again, granting this building, it's not just there for your use, it's there.
I just want to, just with Brian, interject what Brian was saying. Some of the stuff over by Brady's property, and I know that Mrs. Brady, you know, being that the husband had passed recently, it turns out where, they have their landscape trucks pulling out of their driveway. If you notice, there's, well, you can't see it unless you have this, do they have their plan?
Yeah.
To the right of the current driveway, there's two little pine trees.
Okay.
And there's a row of them across the road, but the two to the right, I've been asked to take those down because it seems to block obstruction of vision from people pulling out of their driveway. Apparently, as they kind of like rock and roll.
Yeah.
Out the gate, they, those two trees, for some reason, just block their vision of what's coming down to 216. So I haven't done anything with it yet, although I have been asked if that was possible.
The angle of the roadway, that actually makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
I can see how that would happen.
And they were little, baby trees, they were fine.
Yeah.
But now that they're kind of growing up, it's, they're definitely blocking a lot of view, so I just wanted to throw that out there, and if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
So your ability to, to any landscaping on that side or screening, is, we have to be concerned about the site distance next door?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, what I'm probably more worried about is, what are the neighbors across the street going to see?
As far as landscaping?
This is the building, but?
That's the building.
The landscaping that, again, what's the visual that they are going to see? You've got the trees planted in front.
I'm very flexible on.
You're not proposing a fence or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
There's going to be no signage. It's not going to look like a commercial, tight, business building. If anything, there'd be just a small sign somewhere, maybe even on the building.
On the building.
But it's not something that we want to propose as a big storage facility.
And lighting?
There will be lighting, but it will only be moderately on the driveway and maybe around the front a little bit, kind of like maybe floodlights just aiming across the facade of the building, or?
So lighting on the building, no standalone?
No, no, I don't, I don't.
Light poles?
Yeah, what I had on our site plan when we submitted to the planning board, is I just did a small, low-cut-off dark sky wall packs.
Okay.
So it just, it just shines on immediately in front of the new building, above the overhead garage door and the access door, and then one right above the existing garage doors that are there. And in our planning board submission, you'll see that the light does not cast past the property lines to the south and to the, into the west.
Okay, so you've given them the photometrics that show?
Yes.
The light stays on the property?
Right. And they're low-cut-off, so you wouldn't see them from across the street or looking straight at them.
Okay. All right, comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, I'm fine, yeah. I don't have any questions, yeah?
Okay. All right, so I'm going to open for public comment. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the requested 80-foot front line variance for the proposed 7,200-square-foot building at 237 Route 216, Stormville. What we're going to ask, if anybody wants to speak, there is a clipboard over on the table here with, that we ask you to please print your name, so we can have it recorded for the minutes, and then just please pick in the microphone. So, does anybody wish to speak? All right, I do have one email that the board received. I think we mentioned this to you, Brian, when you were here last month. There's a neighbor, and my apologies, I don't like to announce anybody's name wrong, but Algen S. Fidel, Fidelli, I don't, I'm not sure. So, but anyway, he sent an email on Wednesday, June 14th, in reference to Appeal Number 3804. "We do not want the structure near our property," very respectfully, with his name. Okay, so, that's the only letter from, or comment from a neighbor that we've received. So, I don't know where this person lives, it, the address is out of state, so I don't, it doesn't help me to understand where he's from.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, just to give you perspective, I think, just in some preliminary landscaping and screening that we've done, we're showing 15 trees to be planted along the 216 corridor.
And the size of the trees?
We usually go three-inch caliper.
Right.
At, at breast height, and then, to probably be at that size, you're probably looking at eight feet high.
Right.
Plus or minus.
Deciduous trees, or are they evergreens, or are they?
What I have is, I got, I have staggered evergreens in the front, and then behind them, I have a couple of deciduous.
Okay, so you are talking about, really, a screening of the building. They're not going to see a mass of a building there.
No.
It's going to be broken up with the landscaping.
Correct, and that's just along the front. And then on the side, as you approach it, going toward the intersection down by the gas station, there's a series of, there's a series of six trees that are going down the property line, so as they're coming down, there will also be some visual screening heading down toward the gas station.
Can you tell me how far back the face of the garage is?
The existing garage?
Yeah.
I'll have to look at the site.
If that's 20, I'm going to guess it's another, maybe 50 feet back?
Yeah.
So it's probably about 70 feet back?
76 feet.
76, okay.
Yeah.
Because what I'm trying to get at is, Brady's power equipment next door has a building, at least that's in line with that, and looks like there's another building, actually, that's more forward.
Correct.
So the buildings, the, this garage that's there now doesn't meet the required setback. The buildings at Brady's do not meet the existing required setback either, nor does the house on the other side. So, and for the purposes of the record, this is, 216 is a county road?
State.
State road, thank you. And so because of that, the town code requires a 100-foot setback, so that's the reason that we're talking about the requirement for the 100-foot. All right, so seeing no comments, close and reserve?
Yeah, close and reserve.
Okay, so do I have a motion to close and reserve our decision?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so hopefully next month, we will have a decision, and, you know, we'll make determination then.
We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, item number two. Appeal 3830 Benedict. Christopher and Maureen Benedict, 67 Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office in order to have a yoga stu, yoga studio in their detached barn pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye? And you're getting Tara, thank you. Tara is not recused on this one. Good evening.
Hello.
All right, so for a couple of meetings now, we've had the opportunity to, to talk with the Benedicts here about their proposed use of a garage that exists on their property, and taking about 550 square feet of that garage and turning it into a yoga studio. We've met with the building department, or at least gotten feedback, requirements on having a water fountain and a half bathroom and everything else that's required.
That's right.
I'm assuming you know what that would mean to your septic, whether you've got to expand it, or whatever you've got to do related to that.
Right.
During the course of our conversations, we've gotten some different stories about the hours and numbers of people and stuff like that, and so I'm going to just state what I understand from the record at this point, and then please just let you clarify it. You are a teacher, and in fact, you teach other yoga teachers to conduct yoga classes, okay? And actually, I had a chance, by the way, I did have a chance to check out your website, and it's very classy, it's very, you know, it's, you get the real sense that it's a very intimate program that you offer. All right, so to your credit, it really was a nice, you know, welcoming website that, you know, it gave me a sense of all the different classes that you're teaching now, you know, yoga at the farm, and, you know, all the rest of it on Saturday mornings, so it was, you know, it really gave me a sense of, really, a number of classes that you already teach in a bunch of different facilities. So, your request here is to be able to create a studio with, on your property, within this detached barn, to be able to teach other teachers to, who could then conduct classes. You would also propose to run your own classes, potentially two in the morning, maybe one in the evenings, and maybe on the weekends. But part of the teacher certification, the teachers have to have about 200 hours of training, for lack of a better word, and part of their training is that they have to be training classes of students. And so to do that, you actually have to have other people come in, not just your own classes, but you've got to have students, all right? Which means you could have anywhere from eight, or we heard a maximum of 15 students, who would be coming at any given time for these teachers to conduct the classes. Also included would be on, probably once a month, I think I understood, and I think part of this came from reading it up on your website, is that there is a, likely to be a five-hour immersion session on the weekends, where the teachers are there for an extended period of time, again, doing more intensive or more special kind of understanding and training related to running classes and yoga, et cetera. There is no special lighting that you're talking about? You're not talking about really creating a finished driveway or anything like that? You're really talking about potentially expanding the surface that's there now, putting some foot lighting or lighting on the building, that's pretty much it. But your hours were going to be, sorry, let me just get this clear, your hours were going to be probably with a one-hour class starting at potentially nine, the earliest, or 9:30, again, we heard different times, going to, either starting at 6 o'clock at night, or going probably no later than 8:30 at night. Okay? This operation, the 550 square feet that you're proposing is approximately a third of the size of the barn. You think you're going to be adding about eight parking spaces, per se, thereabouts, but again, it's going to kind of depend on the students and the number of students that you have. So, what did I miss?
Great job.
It's been a, it's been an interesting learning experience on this one, so.
Yeah, so I guess just to sum up, what you said is, mostly, I'm a teacher of teachers.
Mm-hmm.
As you can see, I teach from here to Stanford, from Poughkeepsie to Stanford, Connecticut, and that's getting old. So right now, my, my, I have shifted what I do, and I teach teachers more than I teach public classes, or that's the shift of where I'm going. And so, that's primarily the reason of having it in my beautiful barn that's already there, and it won't change the footprint, it'll all be interior, and so keeping it really low-key.
Mm-hmm.
And when the teacher training is going on, that is a closed group. There's no traffic coming in and out, and when we had, I have proposed one class in the morning or one class in the evening, that would be for my students or my teachers to get the experience. That would be a preregistered situation that we talked about through my website, and a limited number of people, we're talking eight cars maximum, and, yeah, so it's quiet. Intentionally, the hours that I, that I put are after the school buses are gone, so 9:30 class in the morning, and way before anybody would be looking to go to bed at night, you know, 6 o'clock when the people are all coming home, get a, get a class in and go back home. So, just really quiet and low-key. Yoga is a, is not a noisy thing, and not, not putting signs or lights or anything like that. If anything, it's going to make the back of my yard look super-nice, because we're going to bring in pine trees and landscaping and beautiful vegetable garden and lavender field, and right now, it's just an old horse farm, so it hasn't, we haven't done much back there, as we have done in the rest of our property.
Okay.
So it'll be in keeping with the charm of the original Cary Orchard.
Okay, for the purposes of the record, I'm just going to read in certain provisions of the code, so that we all understand exactly what we're trying to, to meet here, or if we're going to have any issue with this. So, Section 194-90, accessory professional offices. In any district where permitted, the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit for professional offices of a physician, attorney-at-law, dentist, engineer, architect, teacher, artist, musician, and other members of a recognized profession or trade are permitted in residential districts when conducted by the resident only, provided that the board finds that the application meets all the general conditions of Article 9, and further meets all the applicable conditions set forth in this section. A number of employees, not more than two non-resident employees, or one non-resident employee may, and one associate shall be permitted in any dwelling at any one time. Eight external, I'm sorry, B, external evidence, there shall be no external evidence of such use except an announcement or professional sign, not over two square feet in area. All new construction and exterior alterations will result in an appropriate visual composition, which will be in harmony with the character of the residential district, taking into consideration the outside dimensions of the front facade and the appearance thereof, the visual relationships between the property in question and the existing residential structures, the character of the residential district, architecture style, height, et cetera. And then, C, retail sales. This section shall not authorize any form of retail sales as part of a professional office. So we run into the fact that it is a, you are a teacher, so you do meet that provision. You've told us before, and we didn't get it on the record today, so we're going to, at this point, make sure that there is no retail sales. You're not selling T-shirts or water bottles, or you're anything of that sort. You're just, it's, the teachers, this, your, your students are coming for the experience and for the training. And then the external evidence, you've made it very clear to us, aside from the parking of a number of cars, which, as you brought to our attention, there are some driveways in town that have that many cars in them currently, so.
So, just, if I may jump in, just to add on what you said, other than when classes are there, effectively, you will not, you'll never know it's there.
Mm-hmm.
When class is out of session, there'll be really no indication that there's anything different going on, other than it'll be landscaped a little nicer than it is today.
Okay. So Tom, as our attorney, there was one issue we had concerning whether the use had to actually be in the residential dwelling itself, or whether it's actually allowed in the barn.
Right, you would have to render that as part of your decision, whether you agree that an existing accessory building is acceptable for the placement of the facility.
All right, because generally speaking, when we're talking about a business in a home, we're talking about it physically, it's being operated in the home. In this case, you're talking about an accessory building on the property, so there's that extra condition that we have to consider. Is there any prohibition with the fact that it's in an accessory building?
Well, to me, the, the language itself isn't as clear as it could be.
Right.
Because while, if you read in totality, you might come to the conclusion that it has to be within the existing dwelling, but it doesn't clearly state that.
Right.
So, the board will have to draw that conclusion as to whether it feels it has to be within the dwelling, or it can be in an accessory structure existing on site.
Yeah, because A really speaks to the number of employees in the dwelling.
Right.
So that's, again, it calls into play the fact that whether an accessory structure is, okay, is allowed. Now, we did, I opened the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't write it down. So, we did get a couple of letters, so before I open up for the public, I just want to read these in. You want to, you want to speak? Go. Go ahead.
I just need to make a couple of points. The first one is for the people who might be watching, or maybe here in public hearing, that even though they're adding a new driveway, from our last conversation, the mailbox or the address will not change, and I think we have an understanding that if there's like ninth or 10th car, that that will go on to your existing driveway, that you'll, at the most, you will use eight spaces right by the barn, but if there's, let's say, you know, extra vehicles, then you're going to move it to the house, so in case somebody's looking via GPS to locate your property for this session, for the yoga classes, you will not have a separate address for your separate entrance for the barn, but they would actually end up in your front driveway, and then you will direct them to come around to the, to the new driveway, new parking barn, the second entrance that you have. And there'll be no connection between the first driveway and the second driveway, and then, between the old driveway and the new driveway. I just like to, like to understand for the record, I guess, also, you, we had talked about immersion, immersion classes, and those immersion classes are going to be most probably, as you said, between Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, maybe 20 hours or something like that. They may be working for eight hours at this time, or six to eight hours on a Friday, six to eight hours on a Saturday, six to eight hours on Sunday. So can you just elaborate on that a little bit? And what is the population that'll be in that immersion sessions? Thank you.
Sure. If they're, so for the teacher immersions, that might happen twice a year, perhaps, is what my plan is, not more than that. It would be a closed group of probably a maximum of six people, teachers, that are already in my mentor program, and it would be a closed group, and they would just be working. There wouldn't be cars coming in and out, and if it would be easier, they, I could make sure on those weekends, they're all on my side of the driveway as well, if that was a, an issue. But maybe twice a year, I would have those immersions, that they might, now, they're not staying, they would just come for five or six hours, and they'd go home, and they'd come back the next day for five or six hours, just as part of the teacher training.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just get on the record again? You mentioned, brought up a really good point. You did contact the highway superintendent, and he did actually approve the, and a second access, a second curb cut.
Correct.
Off of Grove Court. Off of Grove Court.
That's correct.
So you actually are talking about in putting in a new driveway, again, not necessarily finished driveway, but putting in a new accessway to the barn for these, for your customers that would be coming in.
Yes. And where we're located, because the house is the original house to the orchard before the rest of the neighborhood was there, it's just, they come in and they go in that driveway, and they don't really ever even have to go up to the cul-de-sac. The houses up there, we'd never even know that they're there, because I'm so far removed from the rest of the neighborhood.
I guess I have one more question for Tom, Ashley. When we issued the special permit, the other one that we considered recently, the music studio, where we renewed the special permit, that special permit's there for two years.
Right.
What's the length of?
There is any provide, but you can put as a reasonable limit.
So we can actually, okay. That's one thing for us to consider. Because what I'm worried about, honestly, is, again, because during the course of our discussions, we've heard multiple versions of it, and to some extent, I think you were telling us what you thought we wanted to hear, as opposed to what you necessarily needed.
No, that's not true.
Well, I'm just saying.
I object to that.
Okay.
I really do object to that. You can say that, we've gotten mixed feedback from you as well, and perhaps we weren't clear ourselves on what we wanted at the time, but I just want you to know that I object to the fact that you say we're telling you what we think you want to hear.
Now, the first time we came in, in April.
Maybe that came out wrong, but it clearly did.
You asked us at one point, what can we do?
Well, yeah, when we came in in April, it was, what do we have to do to make this happen? Fill out this application, and come, you're number five. So we did that. We've never done this, obviously, before. So in April, yeah, that came out of our mouths. What do you need from us? And so, we talked to the, with the attorney's advice, talked to our attorney, got it all buttoned up for May, sent you the letter, word for word, what you needed from us. So I don't think there's been any, like, backpedaling or reversing what we said. Once we learned out what we needed in order to satisfy the needs, then that's what we did. We just never done this.
I just think that you misunderstood what she's saying. We ask questions to find out what you want, and sometimes it seemed like your answer's, well, if that's what you want, maybe we can adjust it. We're not looking for you to adjust it, we just want you to tell us what you want, because sometimes we're not getting it, so.
Sure. And our perspective is that we just want to do what's allowed. We want to be within the guidelines.
Yeah, we understand that. It wasn't meant to be a negative thing. I don't, she was just trying to clarify again, that we have to be sure what we understand that you're asking for, that's all.
It's pretty tricky when you've never done this before.
We got that. We're not trying to intimidate you or anything, we just gotta make sure we understand.
Well, and we have to make sure the neighbors understand exactly what to expect. Because one of the issues that we have is what's the enforcement? How do we enforce this? If we say, yep, go ahead, you've got your permit, and now suddenly you've got 18 people there, how do we enforce it? All right, so that's why we really need to help the neighbors understand exactly what are we talking about here. Because as we told you early on, what you're asking for is really not allowed, except with this special permit.
Right.
So that's why we just want to make sure we're truly understanding what it is that you're looking to do, so that if you're hitting on the limits of what you talked about, that's it. We really are staying within what you said would be the maximum number of people.
Understood.
Okay? Because we did hear eight people, 12 people, 15 people, I'm just saying, we point-blank asked, what's the maximum? And that's when we got to the potentially 15, so, you know, so, different things. Now.
Now, tonight was eight cars, but that's, and, you know, to make it clear, you're really, to a certain extent, not asking for so much as a yoga studio in the broad sense, you're asking for a teaching yoga studio.
Exactly.
And that's what, that's what we're really looking to grant.
And that's like kinda hard to communicate to people who aren't really in the yoga industry.
Right.
That I'm a teacher of teachers, and it's a little different.
And it makes a difference as to, I think, our perception of whether it should be approved or not. It has to be regarding teaching, as she read the statute there, as a teacher.
Exactly.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I just want a clarification. When you said two classes a day, are those regular yoga classes, are those you teaching, are those your teaching classes? Like, you said 9:30, 6:30?
Those would be regular yoga classes, where I would teach them, or my teacher trainees would have the opportunity to teach them. And they'd be available if the neighbors wanted to come by or something.
How many teachers, trainees are you gonna have at a session? Because if you, you're gonna have two, one in the morning, let's say, and one in the afternoon, throughout the school year, or throughout the whole calendar year. So you're gonna have like multiple assistants, or just gonna be one person?
Just one person.
Okay, so basically, you, okay, and you.
So either you will be teaching it, or a student of yours will be teaching it under your guidance.
Correct.
And we did clarify that if you're going on vacation, there's no classes.
Correct.
Any classes are conducted while you are there. Again, we spent a lot of time on this, you know, to make sure we really understood what you were trying to do. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Mary, any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we did get two letters that you provided to us, so I just want to read those, yeah, just two letters into the record. So the first one is dated June 27th, from Mary Turry and Richard Turry, from 30 Grove Court, to the members of the East Fishkill Zoning Board. We currently are neighbors of Chris and Maureen Benedict, and understand that they would like to open a yoga studio in their barn at Fishkill, on Fishkill Hook Road. We have known the Benedicts since 2001. When we moved into our home on Grove Court, they are great neighbors whom we have enjoyed getting to know over the past 16 years. The Benedict's house and barn are visible from our home. We think the proposed studio would be a great addition to our neighborhood, and knowing Chris and Maureen, we are confident that they will continue to be good neighbors with the yoga studio there. We are not concerned with any increased traffic in our street, on our street. They are extremely conscientious, and we wish them well in their new endeavor. And then, the second letter dated June 10th, 2017, I don't want to say the name wrong again, but Eleanor Sammartino, to whom it may concern. I live at 67 Fishkill Hook Road, formerly Cary Orchards. While my house was being built, I personally know the property very well, and would love to see the small barn being utilized once again. I have absolutely no objection to Maureen and Chris Benedict applying for an application to run a yoga studio, and hope their application is granted. Okay, so with that said, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Christopher and Maureen Benedict, 67 Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell, requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office in order to have a yoga studio in their detached barn? Come on out, I'm just gonna ask if you please, again, right, you can speak first, Ashley, and then you can go sign in your name while the next person comes up?
My name is Aaron Trizzotti, I reside at 32 Grove Court. I've known the Benedicts for as long as I can remember, they're family friends, grew up with their kids. I just wanted to say, I have no opposition to them turning that barn into a yoga studio. I think it'd be a great idea, like I said.
Can you just focus there?
Okay, sorry. So, I think it'd be a great idea for them, more power to them. The only thing that I ask that they consider or reconsider is the entrance. I have two small children, not that it's gonna be a lot of traffic per se, we're talking about a maximum of eight cars is what they're proposing. Kids go up and down the neighborhood, that's my only concern, being a new parent, and again, just to reconsider the entrance, because there is access from both Fishkill Hook Road as well as Cary Road, just to maybe keep it out of the residents already that's in place. But again, no opposition to the yoga studio whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, my name is Marco Svitol, I am a first-door neighbor, pretty much on the 18 Grove Court. My house is closest to the barn, at the same time. I absolutely don't have any objections to a utilization of the barn whatsoever. However, there are two concerns. One of them is already voiced over, because that's the driveway. That driveway would be fairly close to my property. And as much as we all like to believe that people follow directions, that really doesn't happen that often. So is it fair to assume that a lot of people are gonna continue driving down the street, and then turn around, and then come back? So, do I believe that it will definitely increase the traffic on the street? Absolutely, well. There's no questions about it. And you know what? My kids run around. I have, I'm father of two, I have a boy and a girl, and my next-door neighbor as well have two children, so it's a residential street. And kids are now coming of age, they're all like, you know, nine, 10 years old, they're running around, they're playing around, so increased traffic is a concern. So, again, not opposed to the business and utilization of the barn, but I would like that entrance not to be on the Grove Court. So that is 100%. The other thing is, my question of the position of the parking lot. So is that parking lot gonna be between a Grove Court and a barn? Is it gonna be between my property and a barn? Is it gonna be in front of the barn and the actual house?
You can see, it's gonna come over, I'll show it to you. It's in yellow. This is the barn, this is an entrance, and this is the new driveway and the parking we are. So they'd be coming here into the driveway, and the eight cars are gonna park around here. So that is.
Is that your driveway? Just, don't know why, is this your blacktop driveway right next to their property line?
That is correct. So, again, that parking lot would be alongside of my property, and if that's gonna happen, I'm still against that driveway whatsoever. I don't mind that parking lot being over there, but I would like a significant, basically, vegetation coverage, or something to not show that. Because at the same time, it's a question also of property values. Tomorrow, if I decide to move out of there and sell that home, I don't know how the next owner will look at that, having a facility right over there, the non-stop have some cars over there. I'm not gonna say non-stop, but, you know, whether you're looking at the back of a barn, it's one thing, it's assumed we're there, it's a sort of a country settings, versus back of the barn with seven or eight cars parked right over there. That's about it?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Anthony DiMarco, I live on 20 Grove Court, actually right next to Marco. As a small business owner, absolutely no issue with them having a yoga studio. My issue is the driveway, obviously. You know, I have two small children, they're up and down the street, we have a lot of kids up and down the street. Again, as a business owner, no problem with that. As, you know, an owner of a home, I'm worried also about the whole property value end of it, you know, if we do decide to sell, they'll see a parking lot behind the barn with cars. That's my only issue. So, I mean, there's also, like, the first gentleman mentioned, there's two access points, either Cary Road or Fishkill Hook Road. Other than that, you know, I have, we have no issue, it's just the parking lot. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? You can come up.
Yeah.
I'll wear short.
Sandra DiMarco, I live at 20 Grove Court, I'm his wife. My other concern was when they decide to sell their home, and what happens to the barn, knowing that it's not a separate entity to the home, but does the business still continue? Can it be rented? What's the future of the barn?
That's one of the things for us to think about, yes.
Most likely, if it's granted, no, not most likely, if it's granted, we would limit it to their use, you know, we wouldn't run with the land.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, if we could ask the Benedicts to come back up now. Given what you've just heard regarding the driveway, how important is that second access to you?
Well, the landscaping plan that we have has lots of screening, it's gonna be much prettier. The cars won't be there all the time, only twice a day. But if the driveway's that much of a concern, then I guess we'll have to figure out if we can change.
We have to decide whether we want to. We can use our main entrance, if that makes sense, but then we have to bring them around the other side of the barn.
This goes back a little bit to our discussion. You have to tell us what you're going to do. So, if you say, no, we're insisting on that, then we have to consider whether, based on the complaints, we will grant it, based on that plan that you submit.
I'm not saying that we insist, or that we don't, I'm just saying we need to think about that.
If the, if, could a compromise be made with the landscaping?
Well, you can speak to them, you can speak to them and maybe relay their concerns, and they can let us know. I'm just saying, we may not be finished tonight, we're gonna need your final plan before we can stop the public hearing. So if you need to, next month, that's fine, I'm not trying to pressure you.
Does that mean we'd have to do this again?
Yes.
You know, whether the people will speak again or not, I don't know, but they certainly have the entitlement to be heard. But we can't close the public hearing until we know exactly what your plan is.
So the concern is the driveway being?
Well, and the extra traffic on Grove.
Yeah, I happen to drive by there, I go by Cary Road quite a bit, and I'm trying to remember, off of Grove Court, are there houses?
Yes.
Opposite yours with driveways?
There's one house opposite of that, of our house, on Grove Court with a driveway, immediately across from us.
So, I mean, you, in your landscaping plan, you have your new driveway parked, and you don't have any landscaping plan on your survey.
Well, we emailed that over today, so you'll probably have it there. But, and this parking lot is still about 100 feet from Marco's driveway.
Okay.
It's just my yard is very, very big.
You plan on putting screening in there?
And that's where the landscape plan, and maybe Marco wants to take a look at it, because it's quite beautiful. Because it's quite beautiful. And so, where that driveway would circle in, very pretty, and then the little bit of parking is, right now, where our wood pile is, basically.
On this, that they're just showing to me, you have existing trees, what kind of trees are those? Desituous or evergreen?
They're not evergreen, we're bringing in evergreen trees.
Okay, so you're gonna bring in some evergreen between those, and your...
And that barn.
In fact, this plan is different from the survey, because...
It's the same document, it's been amended. This is...
Okay, so this is what we've...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that, yeah, that's the original one, this one is slightly different.
Yeah, so the driveway's gonna be longer, it'll actually go to the side of Marco's, the barn facing Marco's property, the park is not gonna be alongside the barn. But you could show him...
Yeah, I think, again, as the chair said earlier...
We need to show him the proper plan, we showed him the wrong thing. I don't know, if you want to come back up, sir, why don't you step up?
For the record, for the record, the plan that was submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals are different from what the applicant has in their possession, so we have a little problem here.
They now showed a landscaping plan, so you were, this was pointed out to you? So their driveway now would be, it started in the same spot, but alongside, these are indicating the existing trees, they're gonna...
This is your driveway, that's right.
Yeah, and they're gonna be planting evergreens here, and then evergreens all along here, so it'll be completely blocked from review, so.
Yeah, I mean, with that, that is okay, I don't have a problem with that. Again, this is still a...
So you're still worried about?
Yes, yeah.
Traffic up and down the road? Okay.
Because this is 77 feet, basically, from your area to approximately here, is 77 feet. So what they're doing is bringing it down to 70 feet, because previously it was like 50 feet, because it's 77 from here to here. Okay, so that's like maybe 50, 60 feet. Now, they're moving it to maybe...
Another 27 feet away.
10 feet or 15 feet, or something like that. So this is what was submitted to us, and this is the new version that I just saw right now. I understand that.
And so what's the handout that we had in our packets?
Same thing.
Is that the new version?
Yeah, new version, yeah.
Oh, that is the new version, okay, all right.
But it just came out today, I mean, I have no idea.
Yeah, no, it was with our packet tonight, so.
Again, it's, I'm okay with...
I didn't get the...
You're okay with your intent, you're not worried, you still don't like the entrance off Grove, okay?
The neighborhooders?
Look, I understand the situation, it's not the least expensive.
I think it was emailed to us.
I 100% understand that way, but on the other hand, is my concern, is my children on the street, and...
Can you just go back?
Okay. Just, just in case it wasn't picked up by the camera.
Excuse me, can you just go to the mic and just express it again?
I'm okay with the new plans that we saw right here, the way the landscape looked like, I'm fine with that, I think it's gonna look okay. And I understand the point where the point, where the new driveway is proposed to be, it's the fastest, it's the shortest route, it's gonna be probably least expensive, but at the same time, I do have a concern, because, again, you can control only your own actions. Nobody can control actions of other people, they're gonna be coming right over there. And nobody can predict how people are gonna behave. I want to believe all the best, there's no question about that. But then, we're getting, we're getting to the point, it's always sometimes later easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission, because what if some people are not behaving? How am I gonna control that? Because once it's done, it's done, there is no going back, so, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
So there's still a concern about traffic, which, and again, we heard that multiple multiple times, so, I think we were more concerned about the visual impact of a parking lot, or a parking area. And it seems your screening and your landscape plan is now looking to address that.
Actually, this is the barn, they're bringing it here now, and they're bringing the traffic.
So now it's to the side of the barn, instead of being in the front of the barn?
We did it so that it would be further from Marco's.
Okay.
Yeah, but again, the thing is...
Further off the road.
Okay. If you're making all those changes, then the zoning board of appeal is, needs to know what we are approving, because I have a plan that, I...
Right.
I mean, that's totally different from what you're doing now.
Well, they gave it to us, they, she said, she emailed it to the board today.
She emailed it to us today.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, but again, I didn't even get 24...
I know, we just, we just got it today, that's the issue.
But this is here for, well, it's still here for the public hearing, so...
Correct, correct, correct. But again, I mean, at the last minute, I mean...
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I guess the, the issue still is whether, how important this second driveway is, and that's for you to...
People are concerned about the traffic. I mean...
We come in through, through Fishkill Hook or the other Cary Road.
Your existing entrance.
Leave the parking lot where we have it proposed there.
What you're going to have to do, I mean, I don't think, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, if you use your existing driveway, you don't have any concern if you say, "That's what we're going to do, and we can consider that." If you say you're going to come off Fishkill Hook Road, and you don't already have a drive...
I'm sorry, I misspoke, Cary, our driveway comes from Cary.
Okay, you do come from Cary?
Yes.
Because when you said Fishkill, then you would still, we'd have to wait for you to get the approval of the highway department, okay.
Well, it would be the existing driveway.
I think it would be easier, easy for us to say, we would accept the ability, the need to come in through our existing driveway, come down around the house, but then go around the outside to approximately where the, to where the parking lot is now. This would, this would remove the access from Grove Court completely.
Okay.
Then they're not a factor at all, really.
Are you likely to have students coming in and leaving at the same time?
No.
Okay, so you're really only going to have one way of traffic at any given time?
And all going out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not lovely.
It shows a gravel driveway, how much of it is really gravel driveway? Is it obvious?
Well, that was, we were going to bring, we had permission to bring in a driveway.
Oh, I understand that.
Which we're going to keep gravel, so it'd be charming with the neighborhood.
Right.
But now, if we can't have a driveway there, then...
No, I'm just, I was just curious that, because it shows a turnaround and everything, is it really there, or is it grown in with grass and everything?
Oh no, it's blacktop now, our existing driveway is blacktop.
Even that turnaround and everything to the barn?
That's correct.
You might not, you might be able to get away with just keeping that there, I don't know, do you have enough for freight cars then? Not do any of all that other expense.
I want to make sure we're specific, right?
Yeah.
If we have to tell you what we need.
It's, Marco doesn't mind the dri, the parking lot where it is.
It's the access.
It's just the access.
Yeah, I mean, do you have to put...
It's the traffic and the access.
And we really did consider his property, because that house was the only one built by the owner, was Marco's house, and it was put right on the park, property line, so...
We're parents, we understand the concerns, our kids are a little older, but we get it.
They used to run up and down that road.
I presume you want to put it in the back half of the barn, does it have to be put in the back third of the barn, or whatever?
I mean, this doesn't have to be.
It's just prettier back there, the mountain, and if I'm putting in beautiful palladium windows, and the neighbors are going to get the benefit of like this amazing gorgeous structure, like it looks at the mountain instead of looking at...
I can't argue with that, I was just curious.
The new development that's going up on the cross from my house on Fishkill Hook Road.
You can still put the park on the side, I guess, from there. Okay. So, you want to amend the plan to use your existing driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
How about the land, are you still talking about putting in landscaping then?
Yes.
Or you're going, okay, all right.
Yes.
So, there'll be no...
No second access.
No second access from Grove Court, okay. And now, where are you going to be putting the eight cars now, if you're bringing it from the gravel?
We're going to leave the parking lot where Marco said he doesn't mind it.
On the new, on the revised plan, we'll keep it there, and we'll just come around from our existing driveway around to it.
Was that the south side of the barn?
That's correct, come around the south.
The park will be on the south side.
And it'll still look prettier than it does now, because right now it's just got...
And they won't, and they will, right now, you have an open area, there is a, there's a clear access from Grove Court over to the barn. Are you going to block that access, or are you going to leave it open, so somebody could just basically go through the grass?
That access has been there since before, we lived there 20 years ago, and we haven't changed it, so...
It's grass, I don't think anyone will drive across it. It's a law, it's our, it's our yard.
No, I understand that, but again, it is an access to the barn, it has been an access to the barn, it is a, there is, nobody preventing, I mean, nobody's prevented from coming from Grove Court on, towards the barn from that access point?
No one ever has been.
Okay, so...
We've always kept it neighborly, we have a break between our fence and Marco's house, too, because we like it to be neighborly, instead of feeling like we have a fortress around us.
Yeah, and driving by on Cary Road, it wasn't obvious to me that that was a driveway in or anything.
No, it is, because I did a site visit, and I saw that the fence is open, I mean, there's a fence, but that access point is open, so anybody could theoretically access the barn without, you know, you know, even if it's, it was...
Fence isn't stopping them from getting in there.
Correct. Because if there's a fence there, then it is very clear that this is not an access point. So theoretically, one could have an access point to the barn from that existing...
So, it comes down to putting up gates, or putting up, closing in with the fences, is that what you're asking? Because I can do that, that's what it is.
No, because what, what could happen is down the road, I mean, that, you know, people might start coming from the side.
Yeah, but if it's lawn, it's...
I don't think, would you drive across my lawn?
Right.
I, I wouldn't drive across yours.
No, but again, it's, you, you mentioned, I think, in one of the earlier hearings, that it's like gravel, or, or if it was an access point or something...
It's a lawn, it was going to be, but with the neighbors not wanting it, we're accommodating that.
Right now, there's nothing coming in from Grove Court, except there's a break in the fence that's been there, since I put the fence up.
But wasn't there, from, wasn't, isn't there a door up there at the barn that faces Grove Court?
Yeah.
So, how did people in the...
That's where the entrance to the studio will be.
Correct. So, how did in the past, how did people access that door?
When it was a barn, they went from there, probably, but it's not a barn.
It's just a barn door.
I, I, I don't think I've had that bar, that door open in five years or more, it, we don't use it, we use the other side, because that's where our cars come in and out.
Okay.
So, it's there, it's, at this point, it's aesthetics, but I see your point, your point is, we will have a nice door there, we'll have a path that comes around to it now, since we're moving our driveway in it, into a different spot. But I, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't see the problem with there being a break in the fence, and if you could explain why that's a problem, I'm happy to, to address it. There would be, there's, it's grass now, there's no pathway coming in from there, there's no gravel, it's not paved.
Okay. I guess I'd like to see new plans, because, I mean, the real, what you're trying to do, because, I mean, I was under, I did the review under the old plan, now we have a new plan, and now we're going to have next month, latest plan.
We can adjourn the public hearing, that's all, that's not the end. I just have one more question, because of something that came up. You mentioned that you, you are scheduling your earliest class in the morning for 9:30, because kids would be at school. Do you not teach during the summer, or do you, would you be continuing those classes during the summer?
They would be continued during the summer.
So, in terms of kids riding their bikes on the street, or anything like that?
I was really more concerned about the school buses.
Understood. I, we, we were talking about traffic and other issues, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I get that, that's, I'm just asking the question.
Lot of cars, and it's yogis, they're not running people over, and they're just coming in like my, from that corner to there, but now they're not doing that, so, now they're coming in through my driveway, across the front of my house.
I'll tell you, my personal opinion, I think it's going to be less visible, coming in off the existing driveway.
Yeah, it's going to be completely invisible, it won't affect the neighborhood at all, they won't even know it's there.
When I went by, again, I didn't go up Grove Court, I just drive by on Cary Road a lot, yeah, I was concerned that making a parking area and stuff there would not be as nice, even if you had the landscaping, so, I'm sort of glad you're moving it, based on the neighbors' complaints, but I think it would be better suited for the area.
I think the other issue we have is whether we give this a certain time clock to it, like we did the music studio.
Yeah, we'll do that in our decision, yeah.
We'll definitely.
Okay, just because it's, we need to see how it works.
Yeah.
And then we need, you know, to be able to hear, does it in fact work, are there any issues that were not anticipated, that we might need to address, that's all.
So, it would be like a review in two years, or something like that, to come back and see how it's affecting the neighborhood, or not, okay?
So, we have to come back again?
Yes.
Well, I...
Can't we just like send a plan with it from the driveway, it's the same plan you got, you have right there.
The problem is that, once we close the public hearing, we can't take any new information. So, this board has to make a decision based on the information that we receive during the court context of the application itself and the public hearing. We can't be considering any information that comes in after we close the public hearing, all right? So, if you're going to give us a revised plan, and we've already closed the public hearing...
We have to, though, because the driveway isn't there, and you guys can't assume it by us just saying it, right?
Correct. When you're saying where you're going to put it, we really need to see on a plan, because we might need to reference specific information on the, in our decision related to that.
Okay.
So, is there any further comment? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll see you again next month.
Can you, yeah, can you give us a plan in the next day or two, rather than the day of the event? I mean, I did, did not even get this new plan, so can you just get it in the next...
We need this plan with the driveway coming in from our driveway, that's basically...
Whatever you're looking for, it doesn't matter.
And landscaping on there.
Yeah.
Show us the parking, show us the landscaping, show us the access.
But give us like 20 days or something, not, you know...
20 days?
Yeah, not like two hours, or whatever.
Item number three, Appeal 3831 Brooks. Mark Olson, representing Arthur Brooks, 10 Leonard Place, Hopeful Junction, is requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner condenser pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm writing it down, that I open the public hearing.
Good.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mark Olson, Olson &amp; Partners, and Mrs. Brooks.
Okay, so we did review this last month, the issue was that you did renovations to the house, the air conditioner was not considered at that time, you put it, the air conditioning unit itself on the exterior outside, in a location that ends up being closer to your neighbor, to your property line than it should be, but in fact, ends up being less impactful to you than neighbor. But, a complaint was made, hence you're here.
Correct.
And so, we had a discussion about it, the, the building department actually went out, did a review of, of the property, and agreed that where its location is, from a sound perspective, from a site impact, probably makes the most sense, all right? The issues that we still have outstanding, though, is the fact that there are some open, right, there are some open conditions at the property that need to get addressed. There was a permit taken out for a deck in the back that is expired. Now, apparently, the deck has been taken down, but the door is barricaded, so the means of egress is not there anymore. So, is a new permit going to be taken out soon to be able to address that, the rear deck?
Yes. On the, on the plan that you have, there is an indication of a structure for a new deck, that was to replace the, the deck that was removed. The deck structure that was removed was so removed because it had existed without being finished for several years, and the owner did not feel comfortable with, with the structure that has been, that had been exposed. So, when the building inspector indicated that these things needed to be addressed, the owner jumped on it this past weekend, removed the existing deck structure in preparation for the new deck to be built, also sorted a bunch of the debris that had been moved when he removed the RV that was in his driveway as well.
So, the RV has been removed?
The RV is gone as well.
Okay, thank you, that was one of the issues. There's a fireplace that appears to have been installed without a permit?
Fireplace, I'm not aware of.
It's a gas, gas fireplace in the living room.
No permit was taken out for a fireplace that they installed.
Was not aware of that, I can address, we could certainly issue a permit for it, apparently it is a gas fireplace.
Okay, and there are unregistered vehicles?
One.
There's one unregistered vehicle? No, those are, are taken care of, that's, that's good.
Everything's, everything's registered.
It was all registered, somebody took, somebody took the license plates off.
Okay.
And we didn't realize it right away, because it didn't get driven very often.
Okay.
Did you get a new inspection and registration sticker for it?
I honestly don't know.
They're not on the van.
It's not on the van?
No. They expired in May.
Okay, I'll see to it.
Okay, thank you. Again, any open issues, we do have to make sure we're addressing that, so... Okay, Rick, is there anything else that I missed?
Well, they have the addition, that they took out a permit for, and just the foundation is there.
Okay.
So, we don't know what we're going to do with that.
So, what are we going to do with that foundation?
We've indicated on the plan, by notation, that the foundation is to, the top of the foundation is to be protected until such a time that they can continue with the construction of the addition, at which time we will submit for a building permit, a new building permit.
Define protected.
It was a conversation.
Officer Water can't get it and freeze.
It's fine, okay, as long as you've had that conversation and...
Absolutely.
Well, we haven't, but that's a good plan.
Okay. Are you comfortable with...
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Because it's deteriorating.
Okay. I, I'm just going to ask, do you have any plans to sell this property anytime soon, or anything like that? No, okay. Many people come to this board because they're getting ready to sell, and so if it was getting ready to sell, then we might have a different take on what, how you leave that, and how long you have until you pull a permit. Okay, just, just to be clear. Okay, so, between, so the, we need to address the fireplace with a permit, that, replace the deck with a permit, and is this in court now, or no?
No.
No, it, okay, all right, so let's, we'll just deal with that, okay. So, again, do the, the air conditioner itself, the issue was whether it makes sense, we talked about screening, baffling, or something like that, on, go ahead, if you could take us through what you're proposing, so your neighbors can hear that.
We're, we are indicating to surround the condenser with a decorative lattice, on the inside of which would have a sound deadening, or sound absorbing, if you will, material to try and cut down on the decibel level. We also took dimensions, if it would please the board, from the neighbor's property to the existing location of the condenser being approximately 82 feet, and the distance to the, the allowable location, we'll say, being 76 feet. So, there's, you know, there is some addition...
It is more impactful, yes.
But it's also directly in line, directly perpendicular to the side of their house, whereas this offsets to the front of their house. So, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit better from a sound standpoint.
So, the, what you're proposing, lattice-like or something, it's going to look...
It's going to, it's going to look better than...
It's not part of the house, but it's going to look...
It's going to look better than, than a condenser.
And how tall is it going to be?
It will be just about the same height, maybe a little bit taller than the condenser.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members?
A little bit taller, we're talking about six feet or four feet.
Lance says three feet.
When you talk about, when you talk about a little bit, yeah, I know, we had talked about it last time, just wanted to make sure.
We're indicating three feet.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Is anybody here to, to speak for or against the request, Arthur Brooks, 10 Leonard Place, Hopeful Junction, requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner condenser?
Yes.
Yes, sure. Folks, if we could ask you to have a seat?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Chung Yan, I live next to Brooks, 8 Leonard Place. This thing is totally unacceptable. Did you apply for...
No, no, excuse me, you're, you're speaking to us.
Did you apply for permit, permit, when you first set up this conditioner?
All your issues have to be addressed the board.
Yes, sorry. Did they apply for permit, permit, when they first set up their conditioner, central conditioner unit? It's big one, it's not a small one. And also, this nine variance compared to zoning law, 12 feet, compared to nine feet, is totally unacceptable. I'm a number person, nine versus 12 is one-fourth. For example, if I owe you $100, by coming For example, if I owe you $100, by coming to this meeting, I owe you only $75 or somebody else owe me $75. That's a big cut. I cannot take this kind of, you know, big difference. Nine versus, our zoning law is 12 feet instead of, you know, nine feet.
Well, maybe you misunderstand, they're not...
What's...
It's 12.
No.
Requirement is 25?
25, 25.
Yeah, 25, and so they're proposing 16.
Yeah, 16 feet, seven inches.
So it's still 16 feet away from the property line.
No way. What do you mean?
Well, that's what the survey...
On the survey.
No, 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 we hired a survey, and according to him, they have only nine feet to our borderline. That's what I'm talking about. But our zoning law requires 12.
No, no, they're looking for a variance for nine feet. They'll be 16 feet, approximately 16 to the variance, because they're supposed to be 25 feet away.
Yeah, there's no requirement for 12 feet.
Yeah, they're, so, so what they're doing is, they, if they were 25 feet away, they didn't have to come here.
Okay, right now, right now it's 16.
So right now, they are with about 16 point, 16 feet, seven inches away.
So they are still, there, there are still a big difference compared to 25.
It's a nine-foot difference.
It's about a third of the, right, it's about a third of the requirement.
One-third, yeah, correct.
That's terrible, that's even worse than one-fourth.
Okay, but what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna...
No, I already saw what they are doing, they put a tube there. And the issue is, I couldn't sleep at night.
Okay, what, again, we, they're going through a public hearing right now.
Yes.
What they're going to do, once it's all approved, they're going to put a fence and then sound...
No use, no use, no use.
I mean, not a...
I couldn't sleep for quite a few years already. I first complained to Carol Anne, and then she just shrug off. And then I complained to the zoning board last year, June the 2nd. I remember the first time I went there, and they didn't do, do too much. And for all the years, I suffered, I couldn't sleep. It's like submarine at night. I'm over 70, you know? I don't have that kind of body to, to, to endure that kind of slip, slipness night. And the only, only reason is the conditioner unit right now is right next to my front window. I live in the left corner. My husband in the back, back room, I was in the front room. Our custom is, we, we don't live in the ice box. We have to, you know, sort of receive this chi from, from the nature. So we, at night, I always open my window a little bit. And their central conditioner unit is right next to my window. So I suffer and suffer, I complain, I complain, nobody gave me a what. So the issue is, I couldn't sleep at night. I don't care about this, this thing, blah, blah, blah. First of all, when they, they didn't apply for the permit when they first set up their conditioner unit. That's already violation of law, okay? They have to apply for the permit.
I don't...
Let her finish.
Oh, okay, okay.
Then we'll address everything.
Secondly, my issue is, I couldn't sleep. Then somebody's going to do something. And thirdly, if I sell my house, I got idea. You know, my, next door, next owner of my house, they would have to take this, you know, they, they would have to take this, this thing. Like, I decide their fate for them. That's, that's, that's not allowed. And I just couldn't, couldn't, first of all, I, I hope they can move this unit to the different direction and allow this 25 feet, whatever. Right now, they are not, they are not able to give me that kind of distance because my borderline is right there. The unit is already to the limit. They have to move to different direction and to have that kind of distance to my borderline. And as I told you, right now, the condition is, the central conditioner unit is right next to my window, and I have to open my window to connect to the chi, to, to, to the universe at night. I don't live in the ice box, and it's just bothering me. I couldn't sleep, I complained, I complained, nobody listened. And if they stay in this direction, there's no hope. They have to move to the backside of their, of their house to get that kind of distance. And as I told you, my issue is, I couldn't sleep. Then I have to do something. I'm over 70 now, I, I, I really cannot endure that kind of hardship. Thirdly, for, for the, for the next owner of my house, they cannot take this kind of fate. They still have to argue, they still have to fight. So I hope they can move to different direction. Because right now, this, this thing will not change. No matter what they, they say, they do, 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 I only see a tube, nothing. I still suffer. I'm still being suffered. Already, they, they, they said they made improvement, blah, 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 but I still being suffered. So that's the reason I said I have to come up, and for the next owner of my house, they're gonna have to accept this kind of fate. It's totally...
Okay, we're here.
Acceptable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask you to sign in, please? Thank you, just so we have your name. Is there anybody else? Okay, can we ask you folks to come back out?
Could I just ask one question?
Yeah.
On the plan that you've submitted, you referenced that was created from a survey from 2006. Was that an as-built after everything was in place? Because there seems to have been a variance granted in '07. So I'm just trying to figure out the sequence. I mean, does the survey actually show the condenser or was that...
Survey, the, the survey did not show the condenser.
So that's...
I located that...
That's an estimation, okay.
No, from dimensions of the house, which was located.
Okay.
Because the house is only 21...
But the survey shows the foundation of the house that you went from.
Absolutely.
Because, maybe they needed a variance because the house was only located 21 feet away.
Well, it was a variance granted apparently in '07 for a five-foot side yard.
Yeah, because the house was located 21 feet away when they built it, apparently. So that makes sense, four feet, right?
Okay, so let's be clear. You're looking for a nine-foot variance. For you to actually put the air conditioner where it belongs, it's gonna be more visually impactful to the neighbor?
It will be more visually impactful and it will be closer.
Closer to her house?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought I had understood from what you said, so... So instead, you're proposing to put some screening on it and some soundproofing so that we address the bigger issue that she's talking about, which is being kept up at night. Air conditioning units are allowed, there's no question. How old is the air conditioning unit?
I believe it was 2005.
Okay, so it's 10, 12 years old.
Correct.
They're more efficient and quieter now than even just 10 years ago, but...
So her house is located further back from the road?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's why it would be closer.
And you, I think you said earlier on, what's the distance to her house?
The condenser to her house is approximately 82 feet.
Eighty-two feet, right.
In its current location.
Okay, and when it, if, if in fact it was moved to where it, the next best location that meets compliance...
Would be approximately 76 feet.
Seventy-six feet to your house. So if they actually move it to where it should be, it's gonna end up being closer to your house.
But we don't open that side windows at night, only front and back.
Okay.
So that, I would strongly suggest they do that, because right, right now the condition...
Okay, so it's really more an issue of which windows are more in use and where the sound's going.
So if you were to move it where, where it needs to be for zoning, how far would it be from her, her front window? I mean, you say it's closer to the house, I don't have anything to reference that to.
I would...
Hold on, we're, we're asking them some questions at this point, okay? If we need, we'll have you come back up.
Yes.
I would have to go and take dimensions to the window to determine that exactly. I could do that.
Again, it's gonna be closer than it is now.
Yeah.
If it's closer to the house, it has to be closer to the front window.
Ultimately, yes, it would be. If you, if, if you'd like to take a look at an area, I can show you the, the proximity.
Yeah, I would like to see that because I'm having a hard time visualizing how moving it or leaving it would be...
Yeah. But I didn't just...
Yeah, that one's a little bit bigger.
And so your, your condenser is approximately midway on the house here.
If you move it to the back, it will be right...
Okay.
If we move it here, it's gonna be directly across.
And now, is this, this is the side of her house, right?
Correct.
And are there windows on this side? I mean...
Most probably, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
And, okay, so...
She opens those windows.
She opens these windows?
No.
The issue is because her house is set further back.
It's way farther back.
Right, it is, it's considerably further back. That putting it behind the house...
Is it possible to move it back even, and it'll be 76 feet closer to a house? Is it possible to do that?
It would not be 76 closer, it's gonna be 76 feet from.
From the, yeah, correct, correct. Correct.
It would around the front of the house.
Yeah, anything's possible. There's a significant cost involved because it would be a much longer line set to the condenser. You would have to probably especially treat it because it would have to go back beyond the house and the, probably the deck at that point as well.
Can you give us an idea of how many decibels it might be without the sound barrier and how many decibels less it would be with the sound barrier?
Even just at the property line?
Yeah. Of what, what the sound is gonna do, the barrier is gonna do to...
Off the top of my head, no.
No, but you, you can actually get it, believe it, there's an app for that. You can actually get an app that measures decibel level. So you actually would be able to measure where it is now with the, at the property line and then give us some sense of what the soundproofing, how much it's supposed, what percentage it's supposed to reduce it.
Uh, I can.
Okay, that, that would be helpful, I think, and then, you know, I, I think the neighbor needs to understand that there is a concrete difference in, you know, a real difference in the sound. So the screening aside, I mean, is, can we put some landscaping in front of it, something? So she doesn't even have to look at this soundproofing?
Yeah, put some...
Put some bushes, something?
Maverick and the stuff between it.
Again, but bushes would also help to absorb the sound.
Sure, sure, and I can't, I can't imagine that would be a problem. I think that they could provide a couple of bushes to screen, to further screen it.
Can I just ask...
I think you'd need more than a few bushes, I think you need a whole row of them just to, so you have your...
No.
They just have to go by the condenser, that's all.
The condenser's...
Or you can get a new condenser.
The condenser's about...
Right, three feet wide.
Three feet wide.
No, a newer model of condenser, which is less noisy.
It's easier said than done. Yes, go ahead.
I could just ask a question. When Mrs. Hahn originally confronted us with her problem, I went to the town, here to ask what the situation really was, and I was told that since we put it in, in 2005, we were grandfathered because there wasn't a zoning rule at that time.
Somebody misspoke.
Yeah, some, that's...
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, but I...
I mean, it, it, it's not accurate information that you were given, if that's what you were told, so...
Okay, but I didn't want her to think we didn't do anything. But we went and we were told, no, no, you're grandfathered because you put it in before the zoning requirement of the setback of the air conditioner to the edge of the property.
Okay, but again, it was also put in without a permit. So that is, one of the things the town would have looked at at the time that you were putting in is, did it actually meet setbacks at that time? All right, so I think we need a little bit more information, all right? We're gonna have to adjourn this today. We're not gonna be able to close this out and finish, give you an answer in terms of what to do. If we can get a little bit more information about the sound at the property line of the existing unit and with the, you know, the percentage difference with the soundproofing, I think that would really help.
We can try and do a mock-up and use some materials just to, and close it a little bit.
Anything else?
The only thing I'm thinking of, if to effectively block it right now, it's three feet on the high, the condenser is. If her windows are going higher, does it make sense to come up three and a half, maybe four feet to make sure...
It's sending the sound up and not out?
Sound is radiating out, yeah.
You don't wanna get too, you don't wanna get unsightly either, I mean, you're gonna end up with this column of lattice.
But I think that's a very valid point because sound does travel. I don't know what the elevations are, if her house is, you know, it's, it's gonna go up. So you may have to consider bringing your, your soundproofing up higher to mitigate the noise. And I think when you take the sound readings at your property line, you actually need to think about where her windows are to see what the actual noise is gonna be as it travels through, through space.
All right, and in the meantime, you need to deal with the permits and the other conditions at the property, just to make sure everything is as it should be.
I think the only outstanding was the fireplace, correct?
And the car.
Well, yeah, making sure the registration is current on the car.
Yeah, no, I was told today that it was taken care of, so we just have to confirm.
I don't know. I mean, they're saying we don't, but I didn't look at it. We take a look at the sticker in the window.
Yep.
That's easy enough. And the fireplace, they have to come and get the permit for. They'll cap the, or the, the plan will say the capping of the, and then the barricade and the, the deck. How do we address that? How do you want them to address that?
Well, if they get a permit for the deck, that's good for the year to be here.
Okay.
So then they have that time period to finish the deck.
And they need plans to pull a permit. Do you have plans for the deck?
I have preliminary plans that are shown on the, on the drawing that were presented.
But not construction drawings that you can pull a permit with?
Wouldn't take that much to create a permit set out.
I mean, when you have a permit, you have an open permit and then it's not a violation or anything like that, so... So it gives you the temporary means of, of blocking the egress, barricading the egress. That's what we're concerned about.
Well, I mean, the house doesn't require a secondary means of egress from the living area.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the rule is, so...
You can have a slider door up that height with just a wood bar unless you have a permit that you're building the deck or you take out the door and put a window in.
Well, there's no way to get out of that door right now. There's no way to get out of that slider right now, you can't...
Yeah, but it gives the, the fire code would say that gives a false sense of being able to exit the structure. Years ago, they used to just allow the board across with it, but not so anymore.
Correct.
Okay, so you'll come back next month and tell us how you're addressing that, whether you pull the permit or whatever it's gonna be.
It just seems, in the, in the scheme of things, it just seems like it's kinda backwards because we shouldn't be pulling a permit if we're looking for a variance. So, I mean, if it's okay with the town, we can...
You're not looking for a variance related to the deck.
I understand.
And we can't grant a variance if you've got outstanding violations on the property. That's what we're trying to mitigate, the outstanding violations. By pulling a permit, it's not a violation.
Because you have a year or you can even get an extension in case you, you don't get it done in a year, you can get an extension.
So there's a...
Well, you could address that with the building department when you apply for the permit, and they'll tell you all those time periods.
I'll come see you. It's easier than this.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, sure, okay, go ahead.
I, I need to have the central, central unit keep certain distance from my borderline according to our zoning law. The distance I definitely require.
Okay.
Okay? Secondly, for time being, even though they, they moved improvement, but I only see a tube, I'm still being bothered, I couldn't sleep. So I hope after midnight, they shut off their conditioning. They can turn on for a whole day, whole, whole day until midnight. Let me get some sleep, please, because they're, when they're conditioning on, I couldn't sleep, period. So after midnight, can they turn off the conditioning? I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, you're not asking them. The concern is, if we grant a variance and it gets to stay there, it stays with the property. We can't control the next owners of the property.
I just hope some courtesy.
So...
You know, I, I can sleep for time being.
That's why we're trying to make, to help understand how much, we need to understand how much noise is being generated.
So I, I address my plea to Mrs. Brooks because, you know, I just couldn't sleep when they're conditioning on. But I do require their distance between my borderline according to the zoning law.
Correct, but again, I think you should understand...
Okay.
That they have several options. Either we grant them a variance, if we don't grant them a variance, then they will move, they can potentially move it to a different location.
Yes.
And looking at the map and everything, it will be closer to the next...
Okay, we don't, we don't open that window.
No, no, again, you had mentioned about...
You're gonna see it more.
No, no, you're gonna see it more.
It's okay.
And when you sell it to the, to somebody else, they're gonna see it more, so it's...
It's okay, it's okay, I, I just...
So again, you had raised a...
Hearing is, is something bothering me.
Okay.
But you raised, you raised multiple issues, and one of them was...
Yeah.
When you're selling the property.
Looks like and... Looks like, and...
No, it's okay. I assure you, it's okay with me. But I do need some sleep, that's my requirement.
So they're going to do some decibel, because we have to do a, okay? They're going to do a decibel...
Reading.
Reading, to see if that helps, and again, they're going with the three feet of fencing right now with sound proofing. They might even go to four feet and see what happened.
I do require a certain distance, according to the zoning law.
Okay, again, the thing is, they're here for the variance, and so yes, we are hearing your concern, but we also have, have to review their concern, look at the law, and...
I accept the owner of the next, the owner of my house, the next owner, would complain to me
Okay.
All their life. I couldn't, I couldn't accept at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so that's it for public hearings. Thank you, folks. So at this point, we have appeals, or the actual reviews. In many cases, this is the first time this board is reviewing them. So item number four, Appeal 3829 DeRusso, John DeRusso, 3 Patricia Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool deck pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations. Is Mr. DeRusso here this evening? Seeing he is not here, this is his second meeting that he has not shown, so do I have a motion to consider his application abandoned?
So moved.
And a refund of $70, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number five, Appeal 3832 East Fish Gill Solar LLC, Cuddy and Fader LLP, representing East Fish Gill Solar LLC, are requesting a use variance for a proposed community solar facility to be located at 28 Helen Road Rear, Hopewell Junction, which is in an R1 zoning district pursuant to Section 194-16 of the zoning ordinance. Property is in the ownership of Frank, Paul, and Eileen Doherty. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so when, I'll let you guys get set up.
It's the same.
It's the same. But in case you don't know.
It's the same as, same letters that you already got. Yeah, again, another set of information that just came yesterday. I'm just giving one just to be on the safe side. If anybody needs one.
Yeah, this is the...
Newer information.
Okay, yeah, this is what this is.
Do you need three copies?
I don't need three copies. Okay, so where, this is an application that puts the zoning board in a unique circumstance that we're kind of doing site plan review that we don't normally do, because you don't, there's no obligation for you to actually go to the planning board in this case. So, in essence, this board's going to need a higher level of information than we would normally do on any application. I don't, my personal belief in, in the discussion with the planners, there's no reason to do this as a coordinated review unless you are not successful with New York State DEC in terms of getting any information that you need. So if you can update us from the last time that we met with you, in terms of any information that you've been able, I think you've met with the fire advisory board and anything else.
So, since we were, last meeting, we, you issued a couple comments, we went, two of which were to meet with the fire advisory board, and also to, or to have the plan reviewed by the fire advisory board, and also to have the town planner respond to the comments, since you guys were going to be the lead agency on, or the lead board on the site plan review. We did so, we received those comments about 10 days ago, is that correct? In a letter, both of which we sent to you last week. The fire advisory board had no comments. The planner had a couple comments, to which we responded, in the current site plan here. And there, we were happy to walk through the comments from the planner and go through them. There are a couple that are still in process, one of which is, as you mentioned, the DEC. We've initiated conversations with the DEC and Fish and Wildlife, we're waiting for full responses. The second item...
Let's stay with DEC for a second. DEC may need us to be doing a review, because they may need to understand how many trees you're going to cut down. Have you done that level of analysis yet?
So, number of trees, no. Total acreage of clearing, yes.
Okay, I think they're going to need to understand the size of the trees, how many larger trees there's going to be, because it's the nesting of potential endangered species and things of that sort. Go ahead.
If I could just add, Anthony Morando from Cuddy and Fader, nice to see you. Lucia had a conflict this evening, so I'm filling in. In response to the DEC comments and the secret process, the, I think the applicant's aware that there could potentially be, with respect to trees, some kind of restriction on clearing. Generally, it's in October, when you can't clear again until October. I don't think, I guess what I'm saying is, the level of detail on the trees doesn't change what that restriction may be. The DEC will either say, there's a potential for a bat presence here, if there is, you can't, our recommendation is you can't clear, we, you know, the board will accept that recommendation, I expect. So that level of detail may not be necessary for that determination, to go out and do a tree survey at this point. I think, I think probably what we have now is sufficient to at least determine with the DEC if that will be an issue at all.
Okay, it, just, our experience with DEC may differ than what experience you've had, so, I'm just warning you, you may need it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so go ahead.
So we'll be happy to respond to, respond to their comments when we hear back from them. So we've initiated that process. The other piece of it was the wetlands delineation, which was completed last Tuesday.
Oh, good, okay.
And on, we've now put the, the wetlands delineation is indicated on the map, however, the full survey wasn't, is being finished up in the next few days, and so we will send an updated plan with the complete.
Did it change what your expectation was, in terms of the limits of the wetlands?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
It shifted them a little bit.
The modules up in this corner of the site, just to get out of the buffer.
Okay.
By and large, no major impacts.
No major impacts, but there was some minor modifications. Okay.
Which we would have, I mean, we were always planning to do a wetland delineation before. Again, our expectation was we would have to get site plan review at the time. So we're happy to respond to any comments in particular that we, that came through with the planner, or any other comments, or also our exhibits, that provide a little bit further detail on construction, in terms of, you know, sound levels, which was a question you guys had last time, in terms of improvements of the road, in terms of, you know, making, you know, confirming that there will be landscaping here to block it from the neighbors. So I believe we addressed all your comments. If you have further questions or comments on the specific items, we are happy to discuss further.
Okay, the first question I'm going to start with is, let's talk about the fence. You're proposing a seven-foot security fence. This, again, is a residential district, seven-foot fences are not allowed.
Okay.
I believe from the specifications that I've saw, that you're proposing what appears to be a chain link fence. Chain link fences are not allowed, but it may make sense in this case to do that. So speak to the need for why a seven-foot fence, and again, this is a residential district, and speak to why the specific type of fence.
Sure, yeah, so seven-foot fence is required by NEC Code, not National Electric Code.
That's good to know.
So it will run the perimeter of the planned array. We're happy to, you know, it needs to be chain linked, we're happy to dress it up with fabric or plastic.
Sometimes that makes it uglier.
Sure, sure. I mean, so we're happy to work with, with you or the neighbors from an aesthetic point of view, but we unfortunately can't get around the NEC requirement.
So let's just, the town attorney, do we have...
What, it'd be part and parcel of the use variance, you're going to have to vary that.
Okay, so do we consider this because it's a utility or something like that, to get around that?
One question I did have is, is there any process you have to go through to PSC for the connection of this power to the grid, or...
We're going through an interconnection process right now with Central Hudson, but, you know, as it respects, that process is mandated by the PSC with respect to the protocols.
No, I'm just curious, because one of the things we're going to get into is the secret requirements.
Sure.
And whether or not the PSC needs a coordinated review.
Coordinated review.
And we'll discuss that, whether we need it or not, so. So it appears to me, from what I'm hearing, that you don't have to go back to the PSC, they've already approved the process with the utilities to carry it.
As, as part of the programmatic approval, it's not a project-specific review with the PSC.
Okay. All right, the access road, can you speak to, it's not paved, it was a gravel finish, but it appeared to go all the way through the site. The width of it is, I think the fire advisory board just wanted to know how would they get access, so it's...
The fire advisory board actually didn't need access, it's in the letter that they indicated.
I think, but they, I think they asked what type of access it would be, that sort of thing. But go ahead.
Well, we can read the letter. It is going to, the access road is going to come off of power drive, and then, and where there is an existing road now, it's just a dirt road that's basically accessible by ATV. We're going to have to improve it so that, you know, construction vehicles can come through during the year when the facility is operating. There will only be one vehicle coming twice a year to do maintenance to the facility, most of it's visual inspection. And so it won't be a highly-use road, and we're working with Central Hudson, who's the owner of that, of that land, to make sure the improvements are in, consistent with their activities. But that is a deed in, right to the, to the property.
Okay.
You can refer to the last page in your packet, it has detail on, on the, on the construction of the road. Basically, a profile view, it'll be basically compressed gravel road built to the existing grade.
Just to try to head off a problem that I could see arising.
Sure.
With all due respect to the fire advisory board, it appears they're indicating they don't need access to the site.
Right.
So does that mean they don't need access through your fence, as opposed to at least getting into the vicinity with their snorkel truck or something to put foam, God forbid there's something.
I can't speak to why they don't feel they...
I'm just saying that I think that's a little difference.
Sure.
Would they clarify, I mean, would they...
Well, I think we should ask them for that, because they're suggesting that you have a meeting when you're ready to build, and you don't want to find out when you're ready to build that they're unhappy with the road.
So I think, I think we could follow up with the fire advisory board, just to clarify.
Just to...
Yeah. But it didn't seem like they agree.
Trying to head off a little miscommunication.
Typically, in advance of that meeting, we prepare a draft emergency services plan, and put it in front of them, and make sure it works.
But only because of the unique location of this site, it's away from everybody else, it's next to a substation. I don't know what access there is to the substation, if that would lend itself to Fire Mac access to your site, you know, just to...
Sure. Thanks.
It's just a delay.
Yeah, I think that's important for emergency access, it could be any, any kind of a situation, so I think, even though they didn't address it, but I think you should anticipate and discuss with them.
That, that was our anticipation.
But thank you.
Prior to the comment.
That's all.
All right, comments or questions for board members?
Yeah, I don't have anything right now. I think you've addressed the height of the fence, and then the perimeter, and the access issues, so I think, and again, it's a, it's a passive facility, you don't have high voltage power, even though you're producing almost 2 megawatt of electricity, but it is more DC, and it's kind of, and again, you don't have the solar panels moving, so you don't have really that much movement, so it's a, kind of a passive facility right now. So I don't really have much at this point.
What's the decommissioning process that you have in here? What do you...
This was mentioned at the last meeting, you addressed us, you know, what happens at the end of the life, and we will remove the facility. We are happy to make a condition of our permit that we will remove the facility, which we would do anyway, but there is, decommissioning means removing all of the panels, and there, as you can see in the drawings, they're, they're basically driven piles into the dirt, so those are removed as well. So it's, and, and the site would be returned, you know, within, within reason to its original condition.
It's the life cycle of the, the site, do you think?
So the, the facility lasts at least 20 years.
But the panels are actually installed in grass?
Mm-hmm.
But because they're now under panels and not really getting sun, does it stay grass? I mean, realistically, what I'm, what I'm getting at is stormwater management. What happens to the rain? It's now going to slide off the panels, where is it going to go? How are you going to address stormwater management?
So typically, panels are typically seen as impervious, sorry, as pervious surfaces, because the grass does still exist, and, and stormwater continues as it did before. We will, before construction, as in any construction project, have complete stormwater pollution prevention plan, and implement any necessary, necessary measures to address any changes in, in stormwater that this, the facility brings.
Okay, at what point are we going to get that information?
So typically, we would do that before construction, once we're through the permitting process, before we would go to the building permit.
But again, in essence, this board has to do site plan review. That would be information that would be needed to do site plan review.
Or it could, it could be a condition.
It could be a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could put that burden on the town engineer?
Yeah.
He's not here.
And we are happy to do it, do it as a condition.
Well, again, we're, we're looking at a circumstance that is not what we, this board would normally look at, and so we really need to be careful that we're not missing something that normally the planning board would catch in their site plan review, so...
I mean, in that context, my impression is this is a fairly flat parcel, you're not talking about doing a lot of grading or anything like that.
No grading.
No grading, okay. And you keep getting mentioned about the Indiana bat, but you really don't know what other potential endangered species may be in this area, such as the Blanding's turtle or something like that? You're waiting for a response?
So, yes, we're waiting, we're waiting for more information.
They have to get their survey submitted, have it signed off on, or did they sign off on it already?
So we...
You had your, your wetlands delineation completed.
Yes.
So your survey still has to submit it, to have DEC sign off on it? Or...
Yes, so...
Right, yeah.
What, you're saying with the creek being a DEC...
No, no, when, you, you had the wetlands delineated now, so we know you're not in a buffer.
Right, right, they'll tell us if it's a fresh, if it's a freshwater wet, they'll respond and say if it's freshwater wetlands.
So you're still going, finalizing that process?
Right, well, they're preparing, they're preparing that delineation map now. If the DEC requires that we submit it for their validation, we would do that. That could obviously be a condition of approval, that it's done with them as well. Similarly, sorry?
Obviously, my understanding is it's, it's not required
Yeah, I don't think so.
By the DEC, the habitat assessment is different. So the habitat is something we reached out to them.
I know the habitat's a different review, but the wetlands, I understand you're outside of it, but I didn't know if they required the map to be finalized for them to know that, you know, we got the proof that it's outside.
Yeah, they'll, we don't think it is, but if it is, they would tell us in their initial response, when they do theirs.
No jurisdiction, yeah. Now, does NYSERDA require any secret review before they approve anything? You have listed that NYSERDA, you're going through the New York SUN program?
Yes, they, from our understanding, the secret process, they're not, they're not part of that review.
Okay. It doesn't have to be coordinated, then?
Yeah, it doesn't, I agree. Our, my conversation with Michelle, the planner, was, we probably did not have to do lead agency, because that was the end of her memo, was considering lead agency, and I don't, I didn't think we needed to do that, but the question is, do, as part of a public hearing process, should we in fact have a site plan?
It can be as detailed as you wish, or whatever is acceptable.
Well, and I think they're probably looking for guidance on, what do we want, so that they know they come prepared with it, and we have a, a public hearing at the appropriate time. I'm going to, I'm going to assume you're going to ask for one this evening.
Of course.
Exactly, so in preparation of that-
Well, with due respect to the board, obviously, I think that if they satisfy the engineer and the planner to the sufficiency of it, that's the one we could go with. Because they'll be, the town engineer will be the one that will authorize the issuance of any construction permits.
Okay.
And he'll certainly address the stormwater issue.
I like that. Don't, you know, because really, our, the engineers are the one that really have to look at the calculations like that. Okay, so as long as there's a site plan that gets, and the town planner looks it, we're okay with that?
I think so.
Okay. So we're okay to set a public hearing?
I would think so.
Assuming-
You might want to give a little lead time, maybe, if it's August.
The seven-foot fence that you're going to be putting around the perimeter, does it have any kind of razor-sharp edges or anything at the top? Does it have any sharp, I mean, the seven-foot fence, does it just terminate at the top or do you have razor wire or something going around it?
Typically, we terminate with the clipped chain link. You know, there's not-
So somebody could theoretically jump the fence to come in, as an example?
Sure, sure. That's something that the NEC considers when they define their requirement.
Correct. I mean, because, you know, kids on the neighborhood, who knows?
Sure. You can touch a panel, you'll be fine. You know, it's, there are no live wires, as we said before. Obviously, there's medium voltage equipment and that's concerning, you know, but walking around, touching the array, not that I'd encourage anyone to do it. It's rated for safety.
Are you concerned about vandalism at all?
That's, that can be a concern. The glass on the panels are rated for high impact, you know. You can throw a golf ball or shoot a bullet at it and it's-
Don't do it.
Don't do it. But yeah, it can be a concern. That's why the fence is there and we do have oftentimes camera monitoring remotely.
Yeah, I think it was also mentioned last time around that even though you're going to be accessing the facility twice a year for maintenance purposes and stuff, but if one of the panel goes offline, your computer isn't going to be able to know exactly which panel went offline and then you can send somebody to service that panel and not wait till the, you know, for the six-month cycle to be able to do that.
Yeah, and in the packet there, there's more detail than you need to know on the DAS, which is the data acquisition system. That's how we monitor it from offsite, yeah.
Okay, so realistically, you still need to get, you still need to hear from Fish and Wildlife, from DEC, from anybody else, the public service permission at this point? Or no, you're done with that? Okay, so what's the realistic date for a public hearing? Is it July or is it August?
So I guess it depends. If you're saying you want to hear from them before you would have a public hearing or-
I think we need to, yeah, I think we need to-
Or you're going to adjourn the public hearing until you get-
Well, I guess their responses will be something like, there's a potential for a bat, there's a potential for a turtle, but I don't know if that necessarily prohibits us from going forward with the public hearing, right? I mean, it's just sort of like an ongoing concurrent process.
That's why we're willing to set a public hearing, but the point is, we're supposed to be considering their information.
Oh, right. Right, so you're saying if we didn't have something, you'd be thinking about adjourned it, we'd hold it?
Correct, so either delay it a little bit at the beginning rather than get delayed into the future or, you know.
And again, they're going to have probably more experience with a solar farm than we will, so there may be something that none of us are thinking of that, you know, they've encountered.
Let me say something out loud that I could regret, but let me say it out loud anyway. The board seems to be going uncoordinated review. Is that for purposes of declaring itself lead agency tonight?
No.
So if maybe you did coordinated review and included DEC in Fish and Wildlife, they're just going to get the same notice that we've already given them, would that ease the mind a little bit more so that we could set the hearing for July?
Well, no, because then we have to wait the 30 days to declare lead agency, so you've lost a month anyway.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that we set it for July and then if, and we'll keep us on the agenda and if there's any reason that we can't get you the required information in time for the meeting, then we'll move it to August.
We would hold it, I think what you, we would hold it and then adjourn it to August if you weren't-
We try not to do that because then we just have too many meetings that we're just not prepared to open for a public hearing. So what's our date to advertise, Pam? Because we don't even have 30 days to do the lead agency stuff. Our next meeting is in 28 days, so what's the-
Twenty, did you change it in the omnibus?
Yes.
Okay, so 20 days.
Twenty days.
So 20 days, so we really only have a week to get enough information to notice for the public hearing. I think August makes more sense.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Okay, all right, we're coming up with August.
Yeah, we're going to set the public hearing for August, okay?
We were working through dates, that's-
Great, August is great.
August is works, okay?
Yes.
This way, you have enough time to talk to the fire people and-
July 5th is the day the mailings will have to be out and everything else, so that's-
Yeah.
And everybody's doing a lot of work on Monday and Tuesday, so.
Yeah, I'm on vacation. You come in on the floor to get that.
Okay, so we'll see, so we'll do a review in, oh, are we doing a public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah.
Okay, we have to advertise accordingly then. So do we do another review in July?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we're just making an announcement?
Right, because if there's any new information, they're just going to present it in the context of the public hearing.
Okay, so motion to do a public hearing.
And engineer to finalize any others.
Motion to advertise for August.
Yeah, that's a good question. Where do we post their signs?
That's what I was going to ask.
There's no frontage.
Yeah, have to get a hot air balloon.
I'll stand in the corner.
I think at least at the location where the driveway hits a public road.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We can put a couple back here in addition, just if you-
That'd be for the, Indiana bats would see the sign.
There are no Indiana bats now, I can tell.
The turtles will read them.
So speaking of that, just the secret process.
Okay.
The board was going to circulate intent or not do coordinated, just do uncoordinated?
The planner was suggesting that and again-
To do uncoordinated.
No, she was suggesting that we circulate for lead agency, but I don't, unless you guys think for DEC's purposes-
That's why we asked about all the other agencies, so we don't see-
Right, but I just don't, it's actually going to delay you more if we did that.
So there-
Well, if we, if we did circulate, now that it's August, it doesn't, they clearly would get back to us by then. So if the planner suggested it may be belts and suspenders to just circulate, do coordinated, make sure the DEC gets a notice, it doesn't add too much.
Those are my, I mean-
If that's what the planner suggested.
That's, okay, that's what she suggested. Again, I had a subsequent conversation with them, talking through the issues of is it really necessary, and she said unless DEC was requiring it, she didn't see that it was necessary.
Questions we asked, I think, resolved the question that she has, so.
Yeah, so we're-
You're okay?
So as soon as you heard back from DEC regarding the, if they're, regarding the species questions and habitat questions, there wouldn't be any further environmental review that would be required?
Just again, stormwater management, we would leave it to the engineer.
It would all be done by this board.
It would all be done. I just want to make sure I understand the steps of the process.
Right. Now, we're trying to limit what review this board has to do and put it on the professionals who looking are, you know, really looking out for the town in that, those fields.
Great.
Okay? Because again, if we start 30 days and we have to give a notice, we're not going to be even declaring ourselves lead agency until August.
Okay.
So, okay, so do I have a motion to advertise for the August meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you guys in August, yes?
We're going to throw in the variance for the fence?
Yes, it'll be part of the use.
Best part of it, yeah.
Okay.
And if you have any further thoughts on how you'd like the fence to look before the next meeting, we are happy to comply with anything.
It would be helpful, yeah.
Okay. If you do want fabric and friends, if you do.
The good side is going to face the neighbors, okay?
Realistically, the substation has fencing. I don't know that I've ever been back there to see what it looks like, but it probably should match whatever the substation has.
Exactly, exactly.
No reason to do anything different than what they've got, so, okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Wendy? Wendy? Thank you so much.
Okay. Item number six, Appeal 3833, Tripp Mackey or McKay, sorry, Mackey, thank you. John Trippi and Kelly Ann Mackey.
Yes.
885 Drewville Road, Brewster, are requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence, some of which is to be located in front of the rear line of the dwelling at 4014 Route 52 Holmes pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. All right, good evening. So this is the first time we're seeing your request, so if you don't mind just walking us through, do you, are you purchasing this residence or are you?
We just purchased it a few months ago.
Oh, you, okay.
So the neighbor to the left has quite a bit of mess in their yard, and although you can't see it now because of all the leaves and other things on the branches, winter and fall, you can see the mess. It's pallets, dilapidated carports, pallets.
Sounds like a property maintenance issue.
Sounds like it.
We'd like to have it, the fence come further along towards the front side of the house, so the back line, if possible.
Is there a fence there now?
No.
No, so there's no fence at all, so how far forward are you proposing?
To at least the front line of the house.
Oh, yeah, you did.
I'm pleased to announce that the town board last Thursday evening amended the zoning ordinance of the town to allow a fence of up to six feet in height to extend to the front line of the house.
Good.
Therefore, we wipe out this appeal.
So-
Congratulations.
The law will be effective in about a week or so when the town, when we get certification back that it was filed with the Secretary of State.
Start in a week.
Start in a week. Could I, it says to have two feet off the property line.
Yes.
Push it to the property line? Is that okay?
For maintenance purposes, you really-
Two feet off.
Make sure you get the other side to take care of it.
But also-
Say that, what?
They want to come forward of the front line a little bit. If that's okay.
Oh, you want to come forward.
How far, what's, define a little bit?
10 feet further.
You want to wait a couple months to do that or do you want to stop at the front line of the house?
I guess so.
We can refund your money, too, if you-
You could gradually come down before that and go to your four feet to come forward a little bit in front of it, and that still gives you some definition without needing an appeal.
True. Okay, yeah.
You know, they have that where it gradually comes down.
Yes, that way it comes down, sure.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Gives you some, gives you more than what the trees would be.
Sure, yeah, I can give that.
Does that work?
Yeah, that works fine for me.
Okay, so you're okay if we?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to refund anything?
Except five bucks. Are there any issues?
Nothing here to concern about, okay. Okay, yeah, no other issues, so do I have a motion to refund?
Except seventy.
Seventy?
Seventy.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Pam, we'll get it back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, Appeal 3834, Gardner, Melvin W. Gardner, 42 Zerna Boulevard at Hopewell Junction, requesting a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 13-foot by 25-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So our first question is, who installed the shed?
Well, that's, the shed was there, it was always there.
Okay.
Until I moved, I moved in in 1980.
Okay.
So the previous owner had a shed there. What I ended up doing is-
In the same location?
Same location.
Okay, so in the same-
I tore it down and I did make it a little bit bigger when I rebuilt the other one, not knowing, I just thought that because there was one there, I could just put another one up, and that's what I did.
Okay, so when was this shed put up? How old is this shed?
I would say around 1980, '81.
So it's almost 40 years at this point. It's in condition to keep it, obviously, or it's-
Yeah, I submitted pictures. It's all sited, the same colored siding as the house.
Oh, there it is. Huh, it's cute. So tell me, do your neighbors see it?
Really, my one neighbor could possibly see it. It's kind of buried under a couple huge pine trees. There's a chain link fence between the shed and their home that doesn't belong to me. The chain link fence is theirs, but, yeah, and they've been there a long time, too, so.
Okay, you have two sheds on your property?
No, just the one, one shed. I have a temporary carport right now on the property.
All right, one made of block in the front and one wooden shed in the rear?
No.
Does that make sense? No, sorry, wrong one. That's the next person.
She's moving right along.
Sorry.
Hello.
My apologies. I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, these are, it was attached to the pictures, that was my, okay, so, so you put the shed essentially in the same condition, in the same place. It was there when you bought the property, but you just made it a little bit, remember how big it was before?
My wife's ex-husband had-
What?
My wife's ex-husband had the original shed on.
Oh, okay. Do you know how big the shed was before?
I would say 12 by 16.
And now it's 13 by 25, so, yeah.
Well, he had a slab there and, you know, he didn't put the shed on the whole slab, and when I rebuilt the shed, I just put it on the whole slab.
You used the slab, okay.
So the slab did not, so you use the slab as your footprint?
Exactly.
Footprint, okay.
Exactly.
So the slab was already there?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you talked to your neighbors about this or?
I'm very friendly with the neighbors and they don't, like I said, they've been there, been there 20 years also, so.
Okay. Let's hear from them, yeah.
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pam, we'll give you your instructions for your sign and then we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? To the extent that you talk to your neighbors ahead of time would be helpful, okay. Item number eight, Appeal 3835, Meeker, Elizabeth T. Meeker, 8 Cortina Lane Homes, is requesting a 20-foot sideline variance for an existing 19-foot by 12-foot shed, which is located in front of the house, and a 48-foot rear line variance for an existing 13-foot by 10-foot shed, the two sheds, pursuant to Sections 194-107B2 and 194-107BB of the zoning ordinance. All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So you have two sheds, one made of block in the front and wooden, wooden in the rear.
Correct.
One of them is unfinished and missing a door?
Correct.
Okay, so tell us why you are here.
I just purchased the house about a month or so ago.
Oh, so you didn't even put these up?
No.
Okay.
And I think I was talking to the building department, said that the one in the back was illegal, that wasn't on the tax map. The one in the front has been on the tax map, I think, since 1970s, but I wanted to make sure, I mean, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the current sheds. One of the roofs needs to be replaced and the other one in the back, definitely, if I'm allowed to keep it, I'd like to finish it up, you know, put the siding on it and the floor. But I think ultimately, I would like to be able to try to keep the sheds due to the fact that the house itself does not really have any storage, no basement, no attic, and so it would be very helpful stuff, but I want to make sure I go through the right process and make them legal.
Do you have any inclination at all to move the shed in the back? Can it be moved forward?
I'm not 100% sure where you'd even move it. The house is kind of in the middle, the, where the shed is, I'm trying to count how many feet, I mean, if I have to move it, it would be like right on the back of the house.
Well, not if you come again, even like 5, 10 feet, could you move forward?
Right, the block shed-
You have 54 feet to the house.
Because you're only two feet away from your property line.
I know.
That's, I know.[1578.12] That's... I know.
Does it matter that it drops right off?
Well, yeah, if it's not a flat land, then...
Behind the shed, it just drops right off.
Oh. So does that make it more visible to the neighbor, or... Because it's now higher?
Behind it.
There's no neighbors behind?
I think eighty-four is there, right?
That's, we call it the castle back there. I don't know how long it's been vacant, but...
Well, yeah, that's right.
But there's definitely a lot of...
Oh, okay.
Oh.
The things we learn.
Yeah. Three, half a year ago, when they were in...
On Nicholson Road?
Okay.
There's several houses on the property?
All right, so tell us about the land itself. Is your land flat? Is it...
Yeah, right.
Do you have any drainage issues? Where's your septic?
Okay, so the front of the house is where the block, the shed is next door to the main house. That's flat. You've got a parking area here, you've got a nice piece of flat grass. Then the house is built into a hill, so it does start going up. And the back part of the house, really, you only can see the one level, and that's flat. And then the sheds on the back of that flat piece. And then, as you said, behind that, it drops off to the neighbor's house. I'm trying to think. So drainage issues, the septic is in the front, the lowest, pretty much point. The well is up at the top.
But so, I mean, again, it's twenty... It's two feet from the property line. If you moved it in ten feet, is it flat there, or is it...
It is, but if that's a requirement... I hate to say it, I'd probably take it down, not that I'd want to.
Right.
But it just doesn't make sense for, to just be right in the middle of the backyard.
Right.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, a couple of feet. Man, and there's a fence there, or do you maintain behind the shed at all? What's...
I did take pictures of it. It's pretty much just wire, and it's sort of... Broken down on the left side, it's like not even two feet, and then up, there are power poles. There's a pole right in the, on the yard, pretty much. And behind there, it's, again, it's not barbed wire, it's just sort of plastic wiring. Then that goes up pretty high, I want to say that's probably five and a half feet on that side. It's been... Once it's on my property, not on the back property, it is a chain-link fence that's about five feet tall.
Okay. But again, you have a property that drops off significantly behind you, and so your neighbor's not likely to see it. So I'd say we hear from, we notice it for a public hearing, and let's see what the neighbors say.
One thing that you have to remember, that you have this Cortina Lane that goes around your property, so you have two front yards. That's an issue that'll come up at the public hearings. So after saying that, motion to advertise.
But that doesn't affect the variance, is...
Yeah, it doesn't affect where it is.
Correct, but again...
But this... What?
Okay.
Again, that's sideline variance for there, that's not front line.
Yeah, that's the sideline variance, not the rear line, that's the...
So...
Okay.
The... This picture is of what, the back shed?
That picture...
This one here.
Yeah, I have a better picture.
I'm just curious, that's, so that's the back shed?
I'll see if I can get one that's a little bit better for you.
This...
Where's her front yard? Where's her front yard?
Where's the driveway?
Here's the house.
Here's the driveway.
Okay, no, here's the house. This is the front yard.
And it's, here's the back of the house, and it's in front of the back of the house.
Is the shed in front of the house?
Here's the shed, too, so here's the shed.
It's in the back of the house?
The block building, the block building.
This is then also it?
Front to the side.
This is all...
But is, does it extend in front of the house?
Just behind it?
Yeah, what happens is Cortina Lane...
Okay, hold on, let's sign up two conversations.
...has the front of the house, and then it turns, and it goes up a hill. And when it comes up a hill, you can actually, there's sort of a, you can drive on the grass, and it's flat up there, the Cortina Lane.
This is all flat, it's just a... Just, before you answer, let me ask a question. So I'm just trying to get, this facade is here, where is... So you're, this picture here is of that side?
I believe so.
I don't see one or anything. That's one thing, it's the back?
New supply.
I'm just trying to figure out what that picture is, I don't know what it is. Because that shows very rough, that shows very rough landscaping and stuff, and that may... But here, you don't see any of it, in this picture. So I don't...
Well, that's here.
Yeah, these two, yeah, that's the same idea, but I'm just confused as to what the other picture is.
They were taken different times, because there's a woodpile there.
I mean, is this the picture? Maybe this is the side that you're looking at, that's part of the house. So I'm not sure, the little picture, which one it is.
No.
Not it, that's...
It's your picture, so I don't, I don't see how this matches up, that's why I'm confused.
Those are Rick's pictures.
These are Rick's pictures.
So that's why they don't match?
Maybe Rick, maybe Rick can explain it. I mean, that just, the reason, I'm looking at that, because that picture seems to show, well, maybe it's just a log or stuff, but it seems to show roughness. And that's why it would belong there, but...
Okay. I have a motion to advertise, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll see you next month for your public hearing. Pam has the instructions, because you'll have to put a sign. She's got two front yards. Yeah, so you're gonna need two signs, okay? Both sides.
There's only like one neighbor on one side, but that's okay.
Okay, we just had, did have one issue about whether the shed in the front extends in the front of the house.
If it extends into...
Yes, it does.
It appears on the survey that it extends in front of the house.
It does.
So should that be noticed as well?
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah. So...
Okay.
But I have it, it's...
Oh, you have it?
Is it?
Located in front of the house.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to... It's already there, it's already noticed.
Oh, it's already...
Yeah. We're good. Thank you. Pam will give you your instructions, though.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number nine, Appeal 3836, Heitman, Gregory Heitman, 17 East Hook Cross Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot front line variance for an existing sunroom and a variance for an existing pool located in front of the dwelling pursuant to Sections 194-94 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Yes.
All right, so this is the first we're seeing your application?
Yes.
If you don't mind taking us through.
So we're going to start with the pool?
Wherever you want.
That's fine, if you want to start with the pool. When was, when was the pool put in?
Last year.
With a permit?
Without a permit.
Without a permit, okay. Was it done, do you have a survey of your property? How old is this survey?
Survey is from 2002, and the surveyor is no longer with us.
Okay. So where on this survey is, where is the pool?
So the pool is in back of the house.
Okay.
The front door is to the west, no, to the east, and the... So I was told there could be two front yards to the house, however... So the front door is to the east, and the north is, would be the other front door. The pool is to the west of the house, which would be the backyard.
Okay.
But since the road runs...
The road's on the side there, right?
Right, so it kind of confused me when they said, well, it could be in the front house. And he said, there could be two front yards, but I don't see how the front yard could go all the way around the house.
Well, it can. As long as you have street frontage in your house...
But it's not visible from the street. I did bring pictures from street view.
Okay.
To see...
All right, so you've put in a pool without a permit?
Yes.
Is it functional, is it...
Yeah.
So it had an electrical inspection at least, or...
Uh, not totally.
What kind of pool, can I ask? I mean...
An in-ground pool, a liner pool.
But it was excavated, and you did a liner inside, it's not a liner above ground?
Right.
In-ground, okay. And I'm just confused. I mean, East Hook Road is shown on the survey. Is this a private road or a shared driveway going back to these houses? I don't see a...
It's a shared driveway that goes up, and so the front of...
So they made a, the house face the shared driveway, but your front yard is facing East Hook Road?
Well...
Not the way the house was...
The front yard is the, I mean, the house was built in 1950.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. They, in building that, that's what they decided. But under the definitions that we work under, you're, even though you consider it your side yard, your front yard is the East Hook Road that faces the road. So that's an issue, but another big issue is just you don't have a permit or anything.
Right.
And how big is the pool?
We went to get a permit and...
How big is the pool?
Fifteen by thirty.
And how far away is it from the property lines?
Thirty-five feet.
According to whose measurements? Do you have a recent survey with that?
Well, I'm working with Bob Oswald to survey it.
Okay, all right, because...
Yeah.
To get a permit, you're gonna need...
No, I understand that, yeah.
Okay. So thirty-five feet from...
The pool equipment is thirty-five feet. The pool is about forty feet, forty-five feet away.
But if it's in a front yard, or a rear yard even, it still needs fifty feet? No, pool, twenty-five feet. Sorry!
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I'm thinking structure. I'm thinking structure. Okay, sorry. So twenty-five feet, if you have forty, we're okay, but it's in the front?
Technically, in our definition of front yard.
What's the decorative pool that's labeled here?
That's no longer existing.
Oh, okay, all right.
How soon would you be able to get the new survey?
I'm working with him, it's just, he's having trouble with the plot lines and all, you know, it's just old deeds and stuff like this. This is the view from East Hook Cross Road.
Okay.
Who did this survey?
Shakers.
Yeah, he didn't mind, too.
All right, but that was taken now, when all the leaves are on the trees? What is it?
Right, but, well, it's up, it's up in the air, so you can't, it's not visible.
So is there a fence around the pool?
Well, I'm working with, once I get the permit, then I'll put the fence.
Is there a patio around it?
Yeah.
How big's the patio?
Uh, it's just concrete, ten by...
Okay, but patio only needs ten...
Fifteen?
Fifteen foot, so, okay, we should still be okay?
Yep. Except for the front yard.
I just don't quite understand the front yard.
It's the definition that we work under. That's why you can have two front yards if you have a corner property.
But three? I mean, so this is the...
This is the front door, so this is the west.
Yeah, so most people would say that's the front yard, but that's not the legal definition of front yard.
And the other front yard, so you can have, so you're saying you have three front yards?
Yes.
Yeah, if you're on, if you're on a...
On a curve in a road.
Yeah, the yoga studio, the one that we just, has three front yards.
The last one is on a curve on Cortina. So it's two sides, yeah.
I would suggest that you come back on next month, because your map is, your survey is not up to date, and you have all these issues. I don't think we are ready to go to the next level.
Pools, we really need to be clear on the distances, okay? It's just not...
So once the survey, redo the survey?
Yeah, how about the rear shed?
Yeah, let's talk about the shed now. Who, who put up the shed?
The one in the back.
It's, I did.
Okay, how long ago?
Ten years, maybe, eight years.
Okay, and it says that you're looking for a four-foot front line variance, again...
No, not on the shed, on the sunroom.
I'm sorry, a four-foot... Well, so that's for the sunroom.
Sunroom.
Yeah.
Okay, where is the sunroom now?
Where's the, but, so the shed meets the, meets the setbacks?
Yes.
This is the sun...
Well, yeah, we don't, that doesn't look like twenty-five feet, but I don't know what the measurements are, either.
Yeah, I don't know.
If this is forty feet...
You're gonna have to cite the shed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, wait, that's twenty-five feet.
And we, the shed is movable, so we can move the shed, that's not a problem.
Okay, all right.
So it's not movable, then...
Again, that's why the survey's important, because if there's any other...
I'm not worried about the shed. The main thing is the pool.
So you'll move it?
It'd be hard to move.
So let's talk about the sunroom.
And the sunroom.
Was the sunroom built with a permit?
The sunroom was really just renovated, so...
Where is the sunroom on this thing?
Was the sunroom built with a permit? No.
Because if you're calling it front yard, maybe it's not your front yard.
The sunroom is, okay, this is the sunroom.
That's the sunroom, okay.
The point there?
It's forty-six point eight to the short spot there?
Right.
Okay, so how long ago was the sunroom built?
Renovated? It was built in 1950, but it was renovated in nineteen...
You changed the footprint or anything?
Did you enclose it? What was it before you renovated it?
It was falling down. It was just, it was block that you could see through. The house is all stone, so there's no insulation. The whole downstairs is twenty-four inches of stone. So really, the only way to heat it is a wood stove. So the sunroom was block, it was falling down, so we just improved the block. Everything was an improvement of what we did, so...
So it was falling down? I mean, you tore it down completely and restacked?
The block, with the block, we took, in certain sections...
And was it a sunroom before? Was it glass?
It was, no, it was, it was just a block room, had some windows, but, yeah.
So you tore it down, and you made it a sunroom with the glass top?
We made it more, more windows. It was more of a three-season room.
Okay. Did you change the footprint?
A few feet to...
That's a problem.
A few feet closer to the, a few feet bigger, a few feet smaller, what'd you say?
It's a few feet north, I think.
Few feet bigger.
Further away from the house.
I don't have a north on here to tell me which direction.
You made it a few feet further from the house, so you made it bigger.
So that you put it closer to the road?
Correct.
That's why it's a problem?
Yeah. Probably before, you may have been fifty feet away.
Except that, wait a second, that measurement, is this survey is from when?
2002.
And you renovated it twelve years ago, so that was 2005. So you've made it bigger, so it's gonna need more of a, it's gonna be...
It's possible, I don't, I'm not sure, yeah.
So it may not be forty-six point eight feet? Okay, we need a survey.
Yeah, we, obviously, yes.
Okay. We're gonna ask you to come back next month if you have the survey, if not, just let Pam know, and then we'll have you come back in August.
Sure.
Because let's clear everything up once.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Can we put this picture in our file?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Can I guess, you're Mr. Santiago? Item number ten, Appeal 3837, Santiago, Elmer Santiago, 126 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a thirty-four-foot front line variance for a proposed addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Charles Brown, I'm the engineer for Elmer, right here with me. I don't know if you need him to, for the record state that it's okay for me to represent him.
You have to live with it. You, you have to live with it, so let's see how he does.
It's an existing non-conforming lot. The width is only a hundred feet. Based upon that, we get to reduce the side yards to fifteen feet, which, which we meet now, we would meet with the proposed addition. Almost the entire house right now is in the front yard setback. The proposal, it's only got about seven feet nine inches off of the front property line. A proposal is to tear down the front addition that exists on the building right now. That's just a one-story addition. It's in pretty bad shape structurally. And then put a new addition on, which would be sixteen feet four inches from the front property line. So we're actually improving the...
You're lessening the non-conformity?
Correct, correct.
Got it.
And based upon that, I don't see this as having an undesirable effect on the neighborhood or on the environment. And really, because, again, that the whole house is in the front yard setback, there's really no other way to put addition on it.
Right, we're not gonna have you move a house.
Right.
How long have you owned the house? Okay. Yeah, I don't... He's, he's reducing the non-conformity.
That sounds great to me.
Motion to advertise.
I'm actually on the road.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
No, one more.
One more.
Two more.
Two more?
No, 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 this one. Are you gonna talk about it?
I don't know. Appeal, I'm sorry, item number eleven, Appeal 3838, Placido Kieranin.
Good evening, Michelle Daly, on behalf of Alessandro Placido and Mr. Kieranin.
Okay, can I just read what we're doing?
Of course.
Alessandro Placido, sorry, I don't want to say it wrong, Bernard Kieranin, 153 Stormville Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an interpretation of Section 194-3 definitions, particularly retail and service business, and Section 194-90 accessory professional offices.
Yes, we are actually here because Ms. Placido and Mr. Kieranin answered in a complaint to a summons which stated that they were in violation of the, of Section 194 that has to do with a special, pardon me, 194-90 accessory professional offices. However, Ms. Placido has been operating something of a sort of hobby flower shop, and she had set up a website in order to make flower arrangements and make distributions on her, sort of on her personal time. And so we're requesting that the interpretation of business doesn't include hers, because it doesn't really rise to the level of a business. There's no, it's definitely not a retail business, it's, there's no signage out front, there's no vendors coming into the location, and no customers going into or out of. There's no indicia of a business being operated at the location, and any, any deliveries that she does do to the, the people that she's contacted through her website. She personally delivers the flowers. She picks them up at a separate distribution center and then makes the arrangements either from her home or out of her, out of her personal car, and then makes the arrangements either from her home or out of her, out of her personal car, and then brings them to the customers. It's, she's made a total of four hundred gross sales since starting this endeavor in January. And so we would like to request that, we're not requesting that she falls within 194-90 accessory professional offices, but instead that she doesn't qualify under the interpretation of business in 194-1.
Does she conduct retail sales?
Yes.
Just because she's not making money, I mean, any business does, I mean, businesses fail because they don't make money. That doesn't make it a hobby. So just, I mean, I understand the argument with the IRS in terms of whether it's, there's a difference between not making money and doing something as a hobby, so you're not trying to make money. When there's websites advertising, there's prices for different types of okays, and there's a time and effort being made to market retail sales, I think that's a business. Whether you're successful or something else.
And the website actually talks about staff. So, do you have staff? Okay, well, your website speaks to staff, your knowledgeable staff, so... I can't, we can't hear you.
I've worked in the floral, I've worked in the floral business before, for many years, and then I went into an office scene, and then I got out of that, and I wanted to, you know, do something I enjoy. Creating flowers and, you know, hopefully...
But again, you're selling them.
To the extent, I assume that she wouldn't qualify, as far as what I'm getting really from the board here, to the extent that she wouldn't qualify, in order for her to, would she be able to request a variance or sort of a special permit, given the fact that she is located in an area right now that is, it's across from a business, the Trump Golf Course. Her adjacent neighbor is in construction and doesn't live there, and behind her is Homestead Farms, which is 500 acres, which is rented out to a hunting club, and then behind her as well is a dog training facility.
It's a home, and she's able to use it as a home, correct?
Pardon me?
This is her home, and she can use it as a home. To get a used variance, you're gonna have to show that you can't get a return off the property.
But that's not the request that's before us.
I understand it, but I'm just making a...
Alternatively, correct.
You're asking a question, I'm answering your question. To get a used variance, you gotta show that the property, you can't get value, use, out of the property. And that's why you need to get a variance for the use. You have a home, you're living in a home. That's what it was zoned for, and that's what it's properly being used for. So you're not gonna, it doesn't make sense to come back and file for a used variance.
I'm not sure this...
That's what she was asking. None of that's the question before.
Yeah, but in terms of the interpretation that you're requesting...
No, she went on to ask a second question. She was getting our answer, that this is retail sales, and that's gonna, seems to be what our interpretation is gonna be. This is not a hobby. And now if you're gonna say, can I get a used variance to do retail, retail sales out of this location? That's an extremely, extremely high burden. And I don't know how you're gonna do it, since you are able to use it as a home, which is the zoning that's required there.
I mean, if she made the floral arrangements, if you make the floral arrangements, and you bring them to the flea market, or you bring them somewhere else, and you're selling them somewhere else, that might be different, because...
Somebody's, and the family's having a gathering, and you make a bunch of floral arrangements as a gift to them, as a courtesy, because you enjoy doing it, that's a hobby.
Well, the fact is, she's not selling, I mean, she's making the deliveries elsewhere, so none of the sales are actually being made in the physical place where she lives.
I think, there's a complaint that's come in that states otherwise.
Well, that's false.
But the sales...
It's retail sales.
I mean, the sales are actually, I mean, technically, the sales would be taking place online, and the deliveries are being made elsewhere. There's no, there's been no complaints from our actual neighbors, which...
See, that's the great thing about the internet, right? That's a whole new, you know, when the statute was written, maybe it didn't contemplate internet sales, but the sales are being made from her home. She's delivering to another location. She's got a website, she's advertising, I have this for sale. Somebody's contacting her by internet or phone or wherever, and saying, yeah, I wanna buy something like this, can you bring it over so I can take a look at it? And then the sales consummated someplace else. But the business is being transacted, a big chunk of it's being transacted in her own.
Well, I, to be honest with you, I beg to differ. I think that the business is being transacted on, is on the internet, and like, as you were saying, the fact is, is that that particular statute was probably not contemplating internet sales, because if it was, then anybody that's sort of making jewelry out of their house, and then maybe selling it at a flea market, or is creating some sort of a carpentry, something out of their home, and they sell it, you know, on weekends, I don't think that's what was contemplated. In terms of zoning, I think the majority of the concern with the board and, I mean, you know, the greater purpose that I think that you folks serve
The difference is...
Is that you're protecting the neighbors against some sort of discomfort, and you wanna keep zones correct, so that if there's a commercial zone, it doesn't overrun a residential zone. She's really surrounded by neighbors who are already really in businesses, so it doesn't change the neighborhood dynamic, there's no change in traffic, or...
What are the other neighboring properties zoned for?
The, her adjacent neighbor is, is in construction. I can actually provide you with more information prior to the public hearing, which I would like to request. And the farm behind her is, again, it's rented to a hunting club, and it's used as a dog training facility, and then in front of her is...
But again, I'm asking the question, what are they zoned?
I can find that out for you.
Are they zoned for residential use, or are they zoned for a business use?
I can find that out.
We will have a site map as part of this.
And the business across this Trump Golf, is that, that's commercial already?
Yes.
But it, golf courses are residential neighborhoods, yeah.
I mean, the complaint that was made, it wasn't made by her residential neighbors, it was made by like a business competitor.
That's what often happens.
Right.
See, the difference is, is though, if you're going to a flea market, if I sit in my house and I make jewelry, I'm a little silversmith, and I make a hundred pieces, and I don't tell anybody about it, and I don't have an internet presence, and then I go to a flea market, and I sell my goods there, I am transacting business there. Occasionally, yeah. Not, then there's no business going on in my home. I'm just watching TV and making some pieces of jewelry. That's completely different than creating a business location on the internet and conducting it out of your home. And that's why we have people come in, and they ask for a home business thing, because, and all they do is things off the internet, but they're running an office out of the business, and they get a special use permit for their office. They are in real estate sales, whatever. And they meet their clients at the homes that they're trying to sell. But they are running a real estate brokerage in their home, even though nobody ever comes to it.
I mean, the way the statute's written, there really isn't language with regard to internet business, and her business is, there's no one aware of what's going on inside that home from outside of the home, except from what they read on the internet, which, you know, would lead me to believe that the internet is sort of a separate entity than the actual physical location. Because from the physical location, as you pass it, it looks, and, you know, and is a residence. There's nobody going into or out of it, and it's not affected in any way by this particular activity, which is largely undertaken online. And I understand that, you know, everything is constantly a changing world, but the fact that she has really advertised in, not in that particular place, I don't think that she should be, you know, penalized for doing so.
Two questions as follow-up to what you just said.
Of course.
Number one, are you trying to tell me that internet sales are not retail sales?
No, I'm saying that I don't think that the retail sales part of the internet sales should be considered with regard to zoning for a physical location.
Okay, so as it relates to, you're telling me, how do you take delivery of the flowers? You don't, there's no trucks that...
No, she takes her personal car, picks them up at a different location, and then drives them to a separate third location, which is for the customer.
She picks them up from a wholesaler?
Right.
Where are the okays made? So you have to bring them back to make them, so he's not just picking them up at a second location and taking them to a third location?
No, but I would...
Buying supplies, which is, I think, a little bit different than one of the explanations we got. She's buying supplies and bringing them home for the purpose of creating retail sales to people. How is that not a business?
Because the sales are not, the sales are not completed or really consummated at that location. They're, they're done on the internet and at the location where they're delivered. I think that those are the two locations that are relevant, especially with regard to zoning. I mean, zoning should very little...
I think the financial transaction that you're discussing takes place at the home, where you're producing the flowers.
Especially if it's a credit card sale.
It's not taking place where you're delivering it. If you're taking an order over the internet, your, your transaction is occurring at that location.
At the place of business.
Not at the delivery location. So, I mean, if we were looking at it that way, we would essentially have to say that every person who lives in this neighborhood has a retail business, because we all take deliveries of something, of some sort. So I'm saying that your financial transaction takes place where your internet business is based at home. That's the retail business.
So, again, my example of a real estate broker, they have an internet presence, they meet people at the locations the houses are at. They can't bring them, obviously, to their own home and show them off. And then they actually go to a closing, and they get paid at some attorney's office perhaps. They, so you're saying they're not running a business out of their home? They don't have a professional office in their home? My advertising and telling people, this is, this is my phone number, call me here, contact me here through these means? Even if they never come to the house, they're not running an office? They don't have a physical office in their home?
Well, when a physical office is in someone's home, and, I mean, lawyers and different businesses operate out of their home, there's typically some indication outside of the home that they're operating out of there, or that people are willing to visit that location, and...
Maybe the last request we add, which is why it's in my mind, was a real estate broker, no sign, no nothing. That's why it's in my mind, no presence, but that's where his phone is, that's where he runs his computer, that's where he's maintaining his hub of business. And he never gets paid at the houses he shows. He gets paid when there's a sale someplace, that's at a mortgage bank location, or an attorney's office location.
But yet the tree service takes the phone calls at the house, and, you know, goes from there, keeps his equipment at the house, that was, you know, we didn't agree that that was an appropriate place for business.
Again, because that's where everything's being done. Even though he's cutting trees down in somebody else's house.
Right.
Somebody that builds houses, and he's running an office out of his house. That's where his business is. He's not building houses there and transporting them to the other location. He goes to the location, and that's where he does the construction work.
Well, for the same reason that that Section 194 exists as an exception that you could make an argument under, just for an accessory professional office, she...
She's not, she's not a professional.
She's not, and she's, retail sales are not, would not qualify under that. But for the same reason retail sales wouldn't qualify under that, I would say that she should, she should qualify, because she's making all personal deliveries, and the main concerns that I would, from a reading of the statute, is the main concern that there's, you know, people coming in and out of those, nobody wants people coming in and out of those accessory offices.
Those are, those are just conditions of the section. So let's talk about the very first part of it. Does she meet this definition? The zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit for the professional offices of a physician, attorney at law, dentist, engineer, architect, teacher, artist, musician, or other member of a recognized profession or trade.
I mean, the closest I think that she might be an artist, I mean, because she is creating flower, so I think she could maybe potentially come on being an artist.
Okay.
Well, that's an art.
But then the condition is...
Right, so even if she's a profession, I mean, that trade is a florist as a trade.
And you can't have retail sales.
But then you can't have retail sales.
Right, which is, which is what I'm saying, from, as a retail sales, the main concern with, you don't want professional, anybody qualifying, or qualifying under that 194, the exception, the professional offices, because you want the exception to be for retail sales. And from, you know, the rationale of the statute, which I laid out pretty extensively in the appeal, is that she doesn't, she doesn't affect the community in the same way a typical retail sales would in a professional office, for the reason that the statute is written in that way. There is no, there is no additional traffic, there's no customers coming in and out, there's no vendors, there's no signs. So to the extent that she would qualify as a professional office, I think an exception should be made, or she should, I mean, the fact that her business really is operated...
Are you asking for a variance, or are you asking for an interpretation?
I'm asking that the interpretation of the statute is read to contemplate internet sales, and that internet sales shouldn't really be considered at the location where the person who...
Where do you tell the IRS that you're conducting your sales?
Well, no, you don't, when you file...
She hasn't filed a tax, it's, she started in January, so this came up, it wouldn't, she wouldn't have filed yet.
You're gonna have to give an address for your business. That business address is gonna be your home.
You're gonna have a PO box for that, but again...
So if we, so if we changed it to the PO box?
Yeah, okay, but let's, let's get back up here. If you're a dentist, a dentist would be conducting retail business out of that location, because you, a dentist would be meeting...
Not a retailer, not a retailer.
Not retail, he's conducting a service.
It's a service.
Not retailer.
That's a service.
Okay, so everything up here is a service?
It's a profession.
Yeah.
Okay, but again, this statute, the way it is, is written, did not contemplate internet transactions. And right now, we are, I guess, in the area where we are migrating from a brick and mortar store to something in cyberspace, and I think, maybe, you know, maybe we need a better interpretation of what the statute should be, because, I mean, the thing is...
You're asking for it.
It's our job.
Again, but the thing is, right now, this statute does not, I mean, the way it is written right now, we cannot stretch it. So I think we'll have to, maybe...
Which is essentially what I'm requesting, that...
But again, you have to request either the interpretation or file another one.
She's requesting interpretation.
Okay, so we just have to stick with the interpretation right now, and the answer is no. I mean, I, I'm saying is, that it's not there, I mean, I don't see it there. I mean, I, even, I'm trying to stretch it as an artist, but I don't see, you know, the other issues that are coming up. Because, you know, other members of a recognized profession, I mean, so is a florist, or other... Okay, so I think, so, so as far as interpretation is concerned, we can go forward, or you can withdraw and then resubmit for a...
Well, I am requesting an interpretation.
Okay.
But you're, so you're, just so I understand, so let's make it perfectly clear, you're asking us to interpret whether or not this is a retail sale? What she's doing is retail sales out of her home?
And a business, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we can have the hearing, but, yeah.
Okay. Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See you next one. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.